How are you doing, Michelle? Put it in perspective, I think we were in third grade when he was in kindergarten. What's up with that? How are you doing, Nick? Wow. Excuse me, you almost didn't have enough chairs for staff, huh? Who's the high chair for? Yeah, I didn't say that, I was thinking it though.
Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
All right.
Who adoption of the agenda?
We need to delete one item.
Okay.
Item eight, right? Since we've already done that.
That is correct.
Okay. Who adoption has amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Oral communications. There's an opportunity to speak before the council on any matter that's not on tonight's agenda. Good evening, sir. If you could state your name, please.
My name is Philip Larson. I'm a very happy slip renter for seven years at your fine marina. And I wish to express something that I think has deteriorated some of the presence of it. You have a large boat out there that you rent that has a lot of public use. And you have a very quiet, secure marina that I love dearly. It's nice as anything on the bay. Use a little maintenance, but times it. And I understand that on its own it makes money mixed with another agency within your company. It's not necessarily, the total is not breaking even, but the Brisbane Marina makes money and it's a great place. But I think you're really undermining the quality, the peacefulness, and what you've created there by allowing that large boat. And it's noisy, the operator is a bit offensive, and I think it's a safety hazard because that particular location where it is on the berth there is a safe haven for boats that come in in very heavy winds and can't make it into their own slips. So I think you have both a safety hazard as well as a quality hazard, and I think everybody there would rather pay $10 more a month than offset any income that is appealing to the city.
All right.
Could we be clear as to exactly what big boat we're talking about? I think I know, but I just want to make sure.
Spirit of Sacramento.
Or is it Sacramento?
Is it the Spirit of Sacramento?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
May I?
Thanks.
Just a quick thing. I think Mr. Larson has been here for a long time too. Am I not correct?
Seven years. Probably, I don't know.
And you reside in Atherton and also in Santa Cruz?
Yeah, I've lived in Atherton for, I don't know, 35 years, and I just moved to Pasadena and Santa Cruz. But I'm happy to leave my boat here. And you got a terrific spot. Thank you for having it.
Mr. Larson, what dock is your boat berthed on?
I'm at Dock One.
You're on Dock One? Thank you.
About five or six boats up from the Spirit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming through.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
So at some point we'll need to confer with the barb master, yeah?
Yeah. Ted, could you make some comments on some of the comments that Mr. Larson had made?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I tend to agree with them. There have been some problems when they first got started. They've had some, I would think, minor violations of their charter boat agreement, and I've been in discussions with the owner, some things that he needs to do. One with respect to the noise, two with respect to garbage, and three with respect to basically controlling his patrons. Once they get on the dock, they need to be aboard the vessel. They're not allowed to wander the docks. He didn't get off on the first activity in a good way because he didn't have enough personnel staff, and he had a larger crowd than he was able to maintain. So from my perspective, it's kind of a growing pain he's going through right now. And I talked to him today also about some other issues that he needs to take care of with respect to making sure that the gate stays closed, that his patrons aren't wandering the docks, and that they're very well controlled, as per the agreement that we crafted last month. So this is something I'm working through. I'm hoping the boaters can be a little bit understanding until we get to a point where we get a good business model working for him. I agree that the guest dock is a good location for a vessel needing to take refuge. It's 280 feet long. The Spirit of Sacramento, as you may recall, is 85 feet long. I've put him basically on the end of that dock so that he could get high visibility from people that are walking by, particularly during the daytime from the businesses that are out there to help him kind of get patronage for future charters, if you will. It doesn't necessarily need to be a permanent situation, but for the time being, I kind of like it where it is. And we certainly want him to be successful from a business perspective, although I truly think that probably come the end of next year and the end of the Americas Cup, he's probably going to want to change his business model quite dramatically. But with respect to what Mr. Larson had to say, I take no issue with that. And I'm doing what I can and staffs doing what we can to make sure that he's being a good neighbor.
How about this, Ted? Could you come back to the council, say, in three months and just give us an update and make sure that those growing pains have subsided and that the Spirit of Sacramento is a good neighbor for the rest of the boats that are...
Yeah, we can come back and give you a status report on basically where we are today and where we hope to be in another three months or so. That'd be fine.
May I ask a question? If it's bothering the people over there, particularly when people are going to areas that they're not supposed to go, why wait three months? Could it be resolved sooner?
Well, quite frankly, one of the events that he's done is on Sunday nights, he has salsa dance parties on board the boat without actually leaving the marina. And that's really where the brunt of the complaints are coming from because people aren't aware that he's having these. I think he's had three of them. I plan to put it in the newsletter to at least alert the boaters that on Sunday evenings from 6:00 until 9:00, there's going to be loud salsa music coming from the boat, and the parking lot's going to be full of people. I think it came as a surprise to a lot of folks, including myself, that when he did this, that he had, I should say, so much success that he filled the boat up. I didn't think he was going to be that successful so quickly with putting on a salsa dance party and filling the boat up. And that's essentially what he's done for the last three times that he's had this event.
And I'm sure after tonight, there would be more people attending, including myself.
Can I...
Go for a salsa.
But I can certainly bring back a report sooner than that on our...
Terry?
I've heard...
I don't know about that.
I've heard many comments about the boat being there, and it is tremendously loud. It really is breaking the peace of the marina. And it goes till 10:00 p.m. At least, that's what their sign says. I've come through there at 8:00 p.m. at night and was shocked to see the parking lot full. And they do have issues with trash that I've seen. They're drinking out in the parking lot before they get on the boat. And I've heard a couple of the boaters there that have commented to me that they like it. I've had more comment that it is totally inappropriate and it ruins their Sunday. So...
I don't want to wait three months to have that corrected. I think it should be more...
I wasn't sure. I didn't know when we voted on this that the events they were going to have were going to be dockside and that they weren't going out. And I think that having a dockside party that's really loud and not controlled will be an issue down the road for us.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing in the contract that it was dockside either. I mean, is that something that was just fluid or what was the deal on that, Ted?
Well, I knew coming into this that he did want to do some dockside events, but primarily he was focusing on the charter portion of it, particularly this last week with the Americas Cup, World Series, and that sort of thing. And I'm not so sure that he thought the dockside events would be as popular as they are, but quite frankly, he's booking them out. It's an unintended consequence, I suppose, of something that we thought would be an element of the business, but clearly not the principal aspect of the business.
So maybe he just needs, you know, get the people on and get them out there and let them do their thing for three hours and dance with the waves and then come back in.
It's saving him fuel by sitting in the dock and doing what he's doing.
Fuel and captain.
That's true.
Sure, sure.
Everything.
Sure. But not at the cost of Philip Larson.
Yeah, you know, we did talk about doing some events at dockside, like a restaurant or, you know, providing meals. And he did say that he would do that. But, you know, sometimes when you're doing something for the first time, you don't know exactly what those consequences are going to be. And then now you're starting to get feedback and, you know, you're right, maybe three months is too long of a time. Maybe we need to get a report back.
Maybe at the next council. At the next council, I'd like to see an update.
How many events? You have his schedule, Ted, of when he's booking that?
Well, he advertises in the newspaper, and I think it basically depends on the amount of patrons that contact him for a particular booking. For instance, he had a charter this Sunday, and he even gave away charter seats for it, but then canceled at the last minute because he didn't make the numbers that he needed. And so he had someone stationed basically at the dock that Sunday to tell people, you know what? We're not going out today. We're sorry. We're going to give you a voucher. You can either go for a future charter or get a refund on your money. So, you know, it is about numbers. And when we were here, he explained that he needed, I think it was about 120 to 130 people to break even just to make the thing work, even though he's certified for 270.
Okay. You know, Terry, you're out there quite a bit. Have you been to the marina during the salsa event?
Yes, I have. I've been on Dock One and at the club during the salsa events.
And what was your initial reaction to it? I'm putting you on the spot, too.
Not like it.
I was shocked.
Not like...
I was shocked at the loudness, the pulsing, throbbing beat of it all out there. It is not like being at the marina. I was shocked. Think like you're in Cabo.
Ooh, a fun... Cabo in Brisbane.
You'd probably really enjoy it on Dock Six, huh, Ted?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, perhaps, you know, the one element that's missing here in tonight's discussion is actually the owner of the boat, and I think it would be fair to him to at least allow him to respond to some of this stuff. Certainly, my assistant and I have been dealing with him sort of on the policing aspect. And after the second salsa party, I alerted the chief of police and I said, you know, we've got a lot of people out there at night and they should probably do increased patrols, which she has indicated that she's had them do. I went down on one Sunday night just to kind of look, see, and I didn't see people wandering the docks, but I will agree with Councilwoman O'Connell that the music was loud. And so after that, I told him, I said, you know, your music is just way too loud. He has outside speakers on the third deck. And I said, you really need to turn those things off after about an hour or so, just because it is so loud. And he agreed to do that. And so far, he's agreed to the things that we've asked him to do, which is hire more personnel, keep the music down, police the patrons, if you will, corral the patrons a little bit more coming and going from the boat. And again, spoke to him today, and he said he would agree to go ahead and do that. And going so far is even putting up some signage that says patrons of the boat are not allowed beyond this point on given parts of the dock, that sort of thing. So I think in fairness, I would like to invite him to come back if he'd be willing to maybe address it with him directly.
Clay, how many Sundays do we have before our next council meeting? We got a couple.
A month of Sundays.
I guess we got...
When's the next council meeting?
Three. Okay, so there's three other opportunities then to have salsa parties. So, yeah, we should definitely have this back before...
Get in the bay.
We should have this back at our next council meeting. There's enough, as the information's starting to come out, you know, it just isn't a couple of minor, you know, things that are going on. It sounds like it's actually more substantial than that.
And I appreciate Mr. Larson for being here. He actually called me ahead of time and he discussed it with me, and I thought it would be good for him to come to the council before you tonight and share this concern that he has.
Yes. Sure, Mr. Larson, you come back, please.
Counsel, I think this is not a fixable event. I think that you're really changing the character of the dock. And if you, I'd invite you to consider what the total lease rental is from all the patrons that are there versus this. And there's people leaving, and I don't represent, I'm not a sole opinion. There's a comprehensive opinion that feels like I am, and a lot of times, people grunt, walk away in the woodwork. And I think there's people that I know are considering leaving the marina just because it's offensive to them. And so I think it's not something you should try and make better. I think it's just totally inconsistent with the use, and I'd invite you, the sooner you can abate it and find some other... We'll pay more rent, anything not to have that kind of an inconsistent use. And that's, I've probably been redundant in my speaking, but I feel strongly about it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming.
All right. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I had thought that it was the fashion of the mayor to announce letters that you had received, so I, you know, didn't see it on the agenda. So I wanted to mention that I had written a letter to San Mateo County Transportation Authority objecting to the grant monies that you were soliciting from Measure A funds because I feel that the Measure A funds are, you know, the public has paid into the plan and paid the taxes over time and that we should have some say in it. And while they got back to me and said that, you know, it's for studies like that, I still think that there should be a priority of repairing the bridge that's at the south end of Brisbane. I noticed that they finally put a guardrail up in the broken railing of the bridge, but it is in disrepair, and Loma Prieta was over, what, 20 years ago? And we should be aware that there should be a higher priority of fixing what I call WPA-era bridges in San Mateo County.
What bridges are you talking about?
The overpass.
The overpass, it's the...
The Brisbane exit.
In my letter, I wrote what number exit it is. It's like 63 or something like that. But anyway, it's the one that when you're on northbound 101 and you take the exit to Brisbane. So it's the one that goes over 101. And it's...
Brings us on to Bay Shore Boulevard.
Right, and connects at Bay Shore Boulevard. But also, it's right there at Sierra Point, Exit Two, which is equally in disrepair because of the slump. And I feel that there should be a higher priority for that place than a potential future connection sometime in the next, you know, millennia. So the second thing I wanted to mention was some people on Briznet were talking about the property that was or is owned by the redevelopment agency. And they need to know that there's a tour on September 12th to view the properties and that a lot of the properties, the one that is near the Eagles Hall, is one among others that may potentially be up for sale because of the disbandment of the redevelopment agency. So people are having an old point of view about what those properties are going to be for or what properties the city owns. And it would be beneficial for people to know that that tour is happening that day so that they can be better informed. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that on September...
Who's doing the tour?
Pardon me?
Who's doing the tour?
The city.
The city?
But it's for the oversight panel.
It's for the oversight panel, but this is the one opportunity. I don't think it's been well announced that because of the change in redevelopment agency and having successor agencies and successor housing development agencies, that what we had thought was the case in the past may not be the same because I guess the finance director for the state of California is going to be making decisions based on recommendations from the committee. The last thing I wanted to mention is that Silicon Valley is having a watershed summit on September 22nd at Foothill College. And I think it would be wonderful for open space and ecology and other people who are interested in watershed issues to come to it. And it is on the website for etc., A-C-E-T-E-R-R-A, the Action for Healthy Planet Group. And again, it's Saturday, September 22nd. I don't have my glasses on. I think it's 8:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it's going to have people from the city of Palo Alto, Santa Clara Water District, and Professor Jerry Smith talking about ecosystems. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana. Real quick, Randy, the overpass repair, I mean, I know that it has taken some hits, but it still stays, you know, standing, but...
Caltrans.
Yeah, I mean, do you think that there's ever going to be an opportunity to make it more up-to-date than what it currently is using perhaps Measure A money or some other future initiative?
Well, I can certainly contact the owner and ask them what their schedule or anticipated scheduled repair that is served. As Councilmember Conway noted, that's a Caltrans bridge.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't be maintaining it.
Yeah. And Clay, Dana mentioned the Eagles Club and the RDA, but the visitation is not an RDA or wasn't an RDA.
No, it was purchased with the housing funds, which are part of the, came from the redevelopment funds, but it's not a redevelopment agency asset, it's a housing agency asset.
Okay.
So there's no current thought or plan to sell that property.
Okay, and this is not the usual, but you're talking about the property next to the former Ristar Cafe? Yeah, okay. And then Stuart, if you can...
Could I add to that?
Oh, okay.
I'll defer to staff on the accuracy of my statement here, but it's my understanding that the new legislation requires us to come up with a property disposition plan that we have to submit by October, and it'll run through the successor agency and then it will go, which is really us. And then it goes to the oversight panel, and then it goes to all those upper authorities to see whether they agree with what we propose to do. And that set of decisions hasn't been made yet, but one possibility is to sell it, but that would just be one of the disposition alternatives. So do I have that right?
I use the word management rarer than disposition because it may involve the city retaining it and developing it for housing or...
Go ahead, kid.
It may involve the city retaining the property and developing it for housing or other public uses.
Right.
Some of the properties owned by the agency are not housing properties, but for example, parks, parking lots, things of that nature. So the plan is simply like a land use plan indicating what the city's intended use of the property may be, which might include sale, but very likely is going to include other uses.
Right. But in the meantime, there's a moratorium, right?
In the meantime, nothing happens.
Nothing can happen...
Correct.
Until this plan gets proposed. I presume it'll come through the successor agency and then the oversight panel, and then it eventually has to get approved by the Department of Finance, right?
Correct.
So in the meantime, we have to hold off until we can propose something which then presumably will get approval or disapproval.
Yeah, it's simply status quo until those determinations.
Until all those steps occur.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And then the other comment that Dana made was that the watershed program at Foothill, if you could, I think it was at Foothill College or... You mentioned that event that's happening on...
Watershed Summit?
Yeah, the watershed, that's at Foothill?
Right.
Okay, and Stuart helps...
We'll pass it on to...
Yeah, we don't tell people to go or not to go if...
No, I mean, you could just...
If they're interested, the workshop is there and...
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? On the, Dana mentioned the September 12th tour. Is that something that is open to the public?
Sure.
Okay.
Right? I mean, the attorney was pretty clear about that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can. As a matter of fact, I think we had offered to Dana because she's been good enough to come to our meetings, and so anybody else from the public who's interested in looking at the sites, just contact Sherry and we'll make arrangements to do that.
Believe it or not, we have another attorney who shows up for the oversight panel, and he was very strong about making this, you know, open to the public. And so, yes, it is a public event.
Although I think Hal just whispered into my ear that, just to be clear, that it's not a meeting of the oversight...
It's not a meeting, no. But the public is free to join and open for them to come along.
Sure.
And it has to be, it has to be noticed, right?
No.
No.
It's not a meeting. The purpose of the tour is not to give the public a tour, but to familiarize those members of the committee who are not aware of the properties in Brisbane.
Right.
And half the committee is already familiar with these properties. So it's really the members of the committee who are not familiar with these particular properties that is taking them on a tour.
Right, that's the purpose.
But it is not a meeting of the committee, which is why it was not noticed or given any particular publicity. But I think what the attorney for the board said is that if members of the public want to tag along, they're certainly welcome to do so.
Right.
My suggestion is, if it's possible, is it possible to add it to our blog? And also, when time comes closer, to put it on the board? Or is this something...
We could do that. I think probably...
parks, parking lots, things of that nature. So the plan is simply like a land use plan indicating what the city's intended use of the property may be, which, which might include sale, but very likely is going to include other uses.
Right. But in the meantime, there's a moratorium, right?
In the meantime, nothing happens.
Nothing can happen until this plan gets proposed. I presume it'll come through the successor agency and then the oversight panel and then eventually has to get approved by the Department of Finance, right?
Correct.
So in the meantime, we have to hold off until we can propose something which then presumably will get approval or disapproval.
Yeah, it's simply status quo until those determinations.
Until all those steps occur.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And then the other comment that Dana made was that watershed program at Foothill, if you could, I think it was at Foothill College or? You mentioned that, that event that's happening on? Yeah, the watershed, that's at Foothill? Okay, and Stuart helps?
We'll pass it on to, a sec.
Yeah, we don't, we don't tell people to go or not to go if
No, I mean, you could just
If they're interested, it's, the workshop is there and
Can I ask a question? On the, Dana mentioned the September 12th tour, is that something that is open to the public?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, I mean, the attorney was pretty clear about that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can, as a matter of fact, I think we had offered to Dana because she's been good enough to come to our meetings and so anybody else from the public who's interested in, in looking at the sites, just contact Sherry and we'll, we'll make arrangements to do that.
Believe it or not, we have another attorney who shows up for the oversight panel and he was very strong about making this, you know, open to the public and so yes, it is a public
Although I think Hal just whispered into my ear that, just to be clear, that it's not a meeting of the oversight
It's not a meeting, no. But, but the, but the public is in, is free to join and, and open for them to come along.
Sure.
And it has to be, it has to be noticed, right?
No.
No.
It's not a meeting. The purpose of the tour is, is not to give the public a tour, but to familiarize those members of the committee who are not aware of the properties in Brisbane.
Right.
And, and half the committee is already familiar with these properties. So it's really the members of the committee who are not familiar with these particular properties that's taking them on a tour. But it is not a, a meeting of the committee, which is why it was not noticed or given any particular publicity, but I think what, what the attorney for the board said is that if members of the public want to tag along, they're certainly welcome to do so.
Right.
My suggestion is, if it's possible, is it possible to add it to our blog and also when time comes closer to put it on the board? Or is this something?
We could do that. I think probably what might be more helpful to people is we just list what the properties are, because most people who live in town already know that.
Already know.
It's the fire station, it's the community park, I mean, it's, it's the park and ride area. So, you know, to the extent that people are really going to be that interested to do the tour, I don't know, but I think it would be good to at least let people know what the properties are and maybe a little bit about what the process is in terms of how we go about this.
What day of the week is the 12th?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and what time is this? I wasn't aware of it, so.
And if we weren't aware of it, public would not.
One would hope. What time is the?
9:30.
9:30 in the morning? Thank you.
Okay. All right, Michelle?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I have kind of a laundry list because it's been so long since we've had a meeting and I only had six items on it, but now I have seven because I just want to concur about the garbage out at the Marina in the parking lot after the events that take place out there. I've noticed it several times and it was disturbing because there are alcohol, you know, like beer bottles that people actually place behind people's tires so that like when they would drive out, they would run over the beer bottle. And I'm concerned that people are going up to the parking lot to drink and then going back to the boat to dance and going up to the parking lot to drink and going back to the boat to dance. Anyway, the first one on my list is the water from Oakdale, which a friend of mine forwarded me the article that appeared in the Modesto Bee. And it was really concerning because that involves everyone in Brisbane's future and how much the city will be obligated to pay for water in the future. And, and so it, it made me think about what exactly, what items really should be on closed session versus what should be public from the beginning. And that really concerned me that this was something that I guess must have come up in closed session according to the article, because I couldn't find anything about it in any of the minutes or the things that I looked at on our own site. And I think that if we're contemplating making that kind of a deal, it really should be public with public input because it affects all of us for a really long time if we're going to be buying water from that far away under, under certain conditions and duress, regardless of what it's used for. I'm supposing that it's used either for the Baylands or for Sierra Point, since those are the two large areas that we have that are under, not developed yet, but I don't know. So that's a concern for me. And also a concern under closed session items was the SPRR easement and the real estate negotiator on tonight's closed session. And the SPRR, I'm sure is the Sierra Point, I mean, the, excuse me, the Southern Pacific Railway easement. And the only one that I know of really is the one that goes around Crocker Park and plus the train tunnel. And if we're contemplating any kind of land swaps or deals or anything like that with that property, that's of concern to me because it's, it's the little tiny buffer zone we have between a lot of the industrial park and the mountain. And particularly, I looked up that parcel number and someone else looked it up also and sent it to me and it was 201 South Hill, which I was off the mark, I thought it was right over here, but that's actually out by the bakery. And that's the access to Dairy Ravine and that's the access to Devil's Arroyo where Crystal Cave is. And I would not want to see that taken out of the public domain at all. And that's also under closed session item. And so I kind of wanted some guidance on what things really are appropriate for being under a closed session versus what really should be aired in the public domain. And so the third item on my list is the excessive amount of dust from the quarry over the last couple of months. And I have called the quarry personally because Bill, the quarry operator, gave me the phone number and all I get is a voicemail and I complain every time I see it when I'm coming home and there's a big blowing bowl of dust coming out of the quarry and, and coming towards Brisbane. And under the agreements that were made for their operating permit, they are supposed to be watering that down and there is not supposed to be any dust leaving the premises and that's not been the case at all. And it's very distressing, especially since we promised that if they were going to continue that it would be under the conditions of the permit. And they're not operating under the conditions of the permit right now and that's of concern. The fourth thing on my list is the excavation that's gone on up at the Northeast Ridge. And I think that they have excavated, it's too late now, but they have definitely excavated further along than where the markers were, that were shown to us when we toured that area with Robin Leiter and with the representative from Brookfield. And I have photographs showing that whole area up there before the excavation and where those markers were. And they have excavated all the way up to the ridge line and that is not where the markers were in the photographs that I show. It left a, a wide area at the top with a road and an area of grass, a little right along the top, and that's all been torn away. And so I'm very concerned about what oversight is going on at the Northeast Ridge and, under the conditions of the permit and also under the conditions of the habitat conservation plan and the entire agreement that was made up there with the EIR. And I feel that it's being violated and I don't see any oversight that holds their feet to the fire about the terms and conditions that were agreed upon. And it's of grave concern because now they have severely even more reduced the quote unquote flyway for the Kalippy. I'm sure in hopes of the Kalippy disappearing off Kalippy Hills, they can develop that too, but that's wrong. It's just wrong. And I can bring the photographs and, and show them to you and then you can go up and examine how far that they have excavated up there. It's really distressing. And I can't talk anymore about that right now because I have two more items on my list and I don't want to lose it. The third, the fourth, fifth item on my list is Tunnel Road and the freeway exit. Tunnel Road is a complete garbage dump. I know that UPC spends a lot of money every year picking up garbage, but they need to do it more often along that road or somebody does, whoever's maintaining that, because I drive that every day and it is despicable. It's despicable. And garbage attracts garbage, attracts garbage. And there's big piles of dirt, there was big piles of asphalt that finally got cleared up that were actually on the roadway as a hazard at one point. And I think that there needs to be some, you know, we talk about how Brisbane needs beautification and how it looks kind of sloppy and people complain about cars and this and that and the other thing. And yet how are people supposed to take civic pride when two of the four main entrances to Brisbane have debris, garbage, piles of dirt and, and it looks awful. It just looks awful. And every day there's more garbage out there along Tunnel Road. And it's very unkempt and it's dangerous and people see the garbage and they think it's okay to dump there. So I don't know what kind of oversight that there can be to do that, to take care of that, but it's a problem. And especially these mysterious piles of gravel and asphalt that keep appearing. Right now there's like four or five piles right when you get off of, of the exit, Sierra Point exit. And, and that's a safety hazard because that's a place where when people are getting off the exit because they have a problem, they need to pull over there, you know, to call for help or do whatever. And there's all these piles of dirt there and gravel and asphalt and it's just wrong. And that brings me to item number six, I guess seven, huge piles of dirt. The huge piles of dirt out on the landfill on the Baylands is now, by my eyesight, almost four or five stories high, at least four stories high. And it's getting higher and higher and higher. And that's really a concern to me because I went through the secret training twice now and, and thank you Ray for finding such a brilliant trainer. That was so valuable. I wish I'd known then what I know now. But in here it says environmental setting as a baseline. Environmental setting is the physical environmental conditions at the time of NOP release. Well, right now, the environmental conditions is there's four stories of dirt piled on a lot of toxic landfill. And I am really concerned that when we get the environmental impact report, it'll say, well, it's not a problem because there's four stories of dirt on top of it. Well, that doesn't mitigate for me the fact that there's a huge amount of toxins there, there's tire dumps, there's all kinds of things going on. And then is there any regulatory oversight as to what kind of dirt they're bringing in there? Because some of it looks pretty scuzzy. And, and I'm concerned that that dirt that they're bringing in there has even additional toxins that haven't been tested and that's all leaching into the lagoon and the bay when it rains. And it seems like right now they're in heavy, heavy mode of bringing in as much, as much stuff as they can, because I go that way to get on the freeway in the morning and there is a constant stream of trucks in and out, in and out, in and out, in and out of that exit there. And so I'd kind of like to know what oversight there is on this soils recycling, dumping, piling, whatever it is they're doing there. How high are we going to allow them to go with these piles of dirt? And are we waiting to see how high it can get before, before, you know, NOP, the NOP release? Because at this point, that's the current condition. And according to CEQA, you know, the EIR is based on the current condition. So this is a real huge concern for me that they're just burying it deeper and deeper thinking that it's going to go away and it's not going to go away. And that's a problem. It's a real problem. And then the other part of that problem, really a minor consequence in the short term, is the amount of dust that's blowing off of those dirt piles. And it used to be when I would come home in the evening after work, I couldn't wait to come down the Causeway and see Brisbane and I'd roll my windows down and smell the mountain, you know, and it would, it would just be beautiful. And now I come down and I roll my windows up because I'll get sand blasted with the amount of filth and dirt that's coming off of that, of those piles of dirt and creating a navigation hazard for people who are driving down the freeway. I mean, sometimes it's so bad I can, I can hear it hitting my car. So what's the deal with that? So that's my laundry list and I'm sorry it takes so long, I know you have a long agenda, but these things have been building up and I wrote them all down because I need them all addressed and they're all really serious issues, so.
It's been a while since we've had our last council meeting, so I can see how that would pile up.
Yeah, like piles of dirt. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle. All right, Clay, just if you could
First two
Explain about the closed session, why we do that.
Well, I probably have, I'm going to kick that one to the city attorney because there's legal categories for closed session items.
Right, fair.
Good question. I guess the main point I would make is that no agreements are made in closed session. A closed session is to give instructions to the negotiator to assist in negotiating an agreement. The agreement will finally come to the council at an open meeting at which it will become a public document and all members of the public can review it and comment on it. So while there are discussions in closed session, there are never agreements that are approved by the council in closed session. That's the way we have always done things, all the time when we've had real estate agreements. We've talked to the council in closed sessions about various terms of that agreement, but the agreement itself comes with the council at a public meeting and is not approved until then. The city at this point is not bound to anybody on anything and until there's an agreement approved in an open meeting, there is no contract.
Okay.
But could you go a little bit further and explain what is legally appropriate in closed sessions?
Well, if you're dealing with a transaction involving real estate and in this case we're viewing, you know, water as an interest in the real estate and the other party to that negotiation is also conducting their sessions and their, their negotiations in closed session and always have done it that way. So what is discussed in closed session are just the terms of the agreement. But those terms are only for purposes of negotiation, not for purposes of becoming a binding agreement. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it's to give instructions to the negotiator and that's, and that's the same, the session that was held tonight was to give instructions to the negotiator on dealing with the other party to the transaction.
Yeah, but I guess the, the further question is, yeah, but so why, why is the negotiating done in closed session? I mean, that's
Well, you're not, you're not going to be able to negotiate if, if everything's an open session and the other party knows what your positions are.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like you can't conduct a negotiation when only one side is doing it in public and the other side is doing it in closed session. We, on these transactions, and typically it's involved the city buying a piece of real estate, and we've done that quite often for open space and for housing projects. We've talked about price, we've talked about, you know, terms of sale, this and that, and, and it would, it would put the city at a very strategic disadvantage to have all of its negotiating positions aired in public before there's been some negotiation conducted with the other party to the transaction. And the law allows you to do that.
Okay, good. All right. And then we had a comment regarding the, the dust at the quarry. Have we had any, any feedback on
The various dust issues that were brought forward, let me have the city engineer respond to all that. He's, his office is responsible for oversight, not necessarily the quarry issue, but certainly the Northeast Ridge and out in the Baylands. I think he can better speak to that.
But before he does, let me just throw in the comment most people may already know, the quarry is not in the city, the permit was not issued by the city, it's county land and is subject to county jurisdiction. So in that sense, we have no regulatory authority over the operations of the quarry in terms of issuing the permit.
But we can call them
Oh, yeah.
And help them come up to
We can certainly be in touch with them and we have been. I just want to clear that in terms of enforcing a permit, what we would be able to, all we could do is contact the county and ask them to take enforcement measures.
Right, maybe, maybe we should, just
We'll send and put them We can follow up with the county and as you know, I've had some recent conversations with them and so I'll follow up directly with, with the Evans brothers who are the operators out there with regards to that. Now, on the other issues, I'm going to have the city engineer respond.
All right, Randy?
Well, certainly dust control is a challenging problem out there and a big piece of the challenge is you don't always know when the wind's going to pick up and what the direction's going to come from and when it's going to cause a problem. Both of the sites that were discussed are, are jurisdiction, are projects that myself and the Public Works Inspector have shut down more times than I can count in the last two or three months. And there continue to be incidents when the winds pick up unexpectedly and it catches the operator a little unaware. So we go out there and force him to get out there and put the water crusting that he's supposed to be putting on there. I sat down and met with the Public Works Inspector again this morning. We went back through the various documents and pulled out the dust control plans and the requirements they have on site. And we're going to continue to make sure that we get the very best dust control that we can out of them.
Is this for the quarry or the Baylands?
This is for the Baylands and the Northeast Ridge, sir.
Okay. All right.
The Northeast Ridge and I think was about them excavating further than what the markers were, is what the issue was, them going up higher than where they were supposed to and is that something that you're aware of or is that something that we should go out and inspect or, or find out what's going on?
I think that was a separate point that Michelle brought up, sir. So having only been here 11 years, obviously I wasn't party to that, to that meeting that happened with the former city manager. So I don't know where those markers are. The markers that I do know where they are, the delineation that the HCP put out there, the fence line that they put in and they approved, I know that's out there and I know that the HCP is satisfied that's there. I know what the limits of the grading plan that were approved under this latest amendment are. And I know where those are, where they are.
And I think that's what you're referring to.
Well, I, I think it's different. I think, I suspect that Michelle has a different impression of where markers are than, than the engineering information that the city approved as part of the grading permit. I, I think that's what's going on. I think Michelle thought it was going to be somewhere different. All I know is what the grading plan itself shows and I know that the contractor has graded per that plan. But I don't know any other previous impressions or field work or anything that was done. That was not shown on any of the grading plans that have gone through us. So I, so I can't respond to it. I don't know what did or didn't happen there.
All right. Just a second, so Ray, let me just, just follow up with that. So what you're saying is that the, the grading that has been done up until this time is in compliance with the grading permit that was approved by the council, the recent grading permit?
Yes, sir. It certainly is that, but I can't certify that it's being conducted as per representations that happened, you know, 15 years or so ago. Things may have changed and again, I don't know, I wasn't at those earlier meetings, so.
Okay, all right. If you want to give clarification, Michelle?
This was a tour that was led by Kevin Paulson and
This was a tour that was led by Kevin Paulson and another Kevin from Brookfield, and Robin Leiter, as the city's counsel on the Northeast Ridge issue, not when she was city manager, it took place about four years ago, before we went into hearings on the Northeast Ridge. So it was pertinent to this, and the markers were placed there by the surveyors that worked for Brookfield. So it wasn't 15 years ago, Randy, or even 11 years ago, it was when we were making the decision that we were going to allow this project to move forward under the new amendment.
Okay.
I'll bring the photographs.
Okay. See, and last thing, Clay, we had, we've talked previous times regarding garbage out on Tunnel Road. I know Jonathan is here today, I mean, we have that conversation, it gets cleaned up, and then, then it comes back out, and, and I get a lot of heat from the community in regards to the garbage that's out at Tunnel Road as well.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with your comments, Mr. Mayor, and also with Michelle's comments. Jonathan is here, maybe wants to respond to it. I mean, it's a conversation Jonathan and I have quite often. I have a best friend that has a operation out there, I might say that a little bit facetiously, she calls me constantly to tell me about the garbage out there. I know UPC sends people out there, they've got a truck that goes out there. It's really frustrating. We've had the police department involved in this issue also, trying to do enforcement. And it's just, you know, it's, it's one of those things that's kind of perplexing, but I, I can guarantee everybody that, from a city staff perspective, we, we're trying our best to stay on top of it, to work with UPC, to get them to, to do as much cleanup as we possibly can, to do whatever enforcement we can, we can do. This stuff, you know, gets dropped off in the, seemingly in the middle of the night, and, you know, they're, they're not going to do it in front of a police officer, or, you know, you know, whatever. So it's a perplexing problem, but it's certainly one that, I mean, I, I take, you know, notice of and, and make several inquiries on a month, because it, you know, particularly, we've gotten complaints particularly around 49er football games, and also, the, on, you know, Monday mornings, you know, weekend activity.
Mm-hmm. Jonathan? I see you in the audience. Why don't you come on up here, I'd like to talk to you about it, please. And I know that you've heard the complaints from, you know, myself and Clay and other council members. What way can, can we...
Identify for the...
Oh, okay, yeah. Jonathan, you can...
Jonathan Scharfman, general manager of UPC and Sunquest Properties.
Okay. So, you know, what ways can we work together to, to make Tunnel Road a better, you know, just, you know, a better situation where, where the, where the garbage just doesn't, like, keep piling up and, and becomes an ice war for the community?
Well, a, a lot of suggestions that have been made in the past have already been implemented, and I want to extend further appreciation to the police department at Brisbane for taking their part in helping out with the patrolling of the area. I do believe that, that one of, one of the pending improvements to Tunnel Avenue that will help is the improvement of the MV transportation, 24-hour dispatch lot for, for step van buses out at 575 Tunnel. I, I think fundamentally, the issue out on Tunnel Avenue is there are not eyes on the street, 24/7. That is the fundamental issue that, that can only be mitigated by there being eyes on the street. The police, obviously, do the best they, they possibly can. Our, our folks are, are out there a couple of times a day, monitoring, we, we, we don't pick up on a daily basis. But ultimately, I, I think that it's really having eyes on the street that make the difference. The communications are, are pretty much on a weekly basis between the city manager, the city engineer, and myself and my staff on monitoring this issue and, and trying to address it. I, I know we've, we've put up cameras up on some of the, some of the telephone poles up there, that seem to have acted as a bit of a deterrent, but not very much. The, a lighting program could help, but that's extremely expensive. Again, we'll have some, we'll have some lighting that comes along at 575 Tunnel. One of the items that we discussed with, with the city manager and the city engineer was coordination with Recology, to make sure that they have better education of their client base, to know what, what their hours are. Because unfortunately, oftentimes what happens, especially in the summertime, when you have the sun out until 7, 8 o'clock, people, people are coming with loads to dump at the transfer station, and they actually get turned away because they're, they're closed. And these, here, here are folks under the dilemma of being shut out of a small job site, and yet not having any, any legal means to drop their loads. And we, we actually have found that to be an issue as well, and it's been discussed with Recology. These are a, a couple things that, that have happened. The, the MV operation is probably going to be tooled up here sometime in October. We should be getting close to certificate of occupancy, if all the inspections go well and, and construction proceeds apace. Other than that, I don't have any further suggestions.
How often do you out to, to pick up debris on Tunnel? Is it a regular, scheduled pickup, or you just pick up when, when someone calls?
We, we have staff that, that monitors Tunnel Avenue on a daily or every other day basis, and, and then we also get calls on a, on a regular basis from the city engineer and his staff, and/or the city manager.
You know, so we have these, you know, we have, you have someone that's out there monitoring it. Sometimes the garbage is out there for a week, maybe two weeks. So, your, your folks have to obviously see the debris, but then, I guess there comes a point, it has to accumulate to a certain amount before something is done about it?
We, we usually, we have haulers that help when it gets to a, a certain threshold, and we, we don't own dump trucks ourselves, we have a one-ton pickup truck that can take certain amounts at, at any given time.
You know, it seems to me like when, when there's debris out there, it more comes to the site when, when it already exists, as when, when you do a cleanup, then it, you have quite a few days before you, you see any debris out there. Maybe perhaps it would be beneficial just to have a, a weekly cleanup at, along Tunnel Road, so that now you, you're setting a precedence that, that this road needs to be cleaned, rather than when there's debris out there, it sends, I think, the, the message that it's okay to drop it, because, you know, I'm not going to get caught, because there's, it's already here.
Respectfully, that is a very long stretch of road, that for many hours every evening is, is unmonitored. We, we really don't believe that anything other than, than improvements along Tunnel Avenue are going to solve this problem. The, we, we certainly can look at a weekly, regular schedule, and we, we can, we can make other adjustments and sit down with staff and see if there's anything that we might do that we're not doing. But honestly, to, I, I, I submit that the only way that this problem is going to be solved sustainably is with eyes on the street, and, and we hope to get some positive feedback when MV takes occupancy in October.
Yeah, you know, I think having eyes on the road would definitely help, and I'm glad that you're open to looking at a, a weekly pickup, maybe perhaps coordinating with staff and doing some kind of temporary, weekly pickup, and then, you know, see, you know, monitor that and see what, what type of results that we get. So I know that you meet with Clay once a week, perhaps that can be on, on the agenda, and we can implement some kind of program like that.
Be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one, one more thing. Randy, this is, this is a, a separate question, but Michelle asked about if there was any regulatory agency overseeing the fill that's going out there on the landfill, as far as the dirt. Maybe you want to comment on some of the stuff that we've done the last couple, couple of years, and Jonathan, maybe that's something that you can speak to if...
I, I think I'm going to bounce that to the planning director, sir, since the, the plan that the current operator is required to come up with is falls sort of under both of our views.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. A couple of issues. One was a question of the height of the piles, and the requirement in their use permit is to limit the pile height to 25 feet, so certainly if there's an allegation that they're exceeding the 25 feet, we can look into that and see if that's the case or not. In terms of the soil quality, there is a soil testing program that's being implemented out there. We've actually, through the city and through a, a private consultant, have looked at the, sort of their standards and protocols, and actually worked with the operator and the property owner to enhance some of their protocols for the testing of the soils. There are certain definitions by state standards in terms of clean fill, and that's what the soil out there is limited to, clean fill material. And there are certain regulatory standards of what that means in terms of contaminants and levels of, that need to be tested, and those loads need to be monitored and tested before they get to the site, and there's paperwork to be tracking the loads individually. And we've been working with the property owner to, to ensure that their record-keeping is, is valid for, to verify those standards of being complied with.
Okay. And so eventually, these piles are going to have to come way down, because once, once a, what would you say, maybe you want to, maybe have Jonathan comment, comment on that, but once we kind of settle on what the height of the, it's going to be, then chances are, I mean, there's going to be a lot of dirt removed from there.
That's, that's correct.
From our piles, okay. All right. Hopefully that answers...
What if I speak from where?
Pardon me?
What if I speak high from where?
From the surrounding level area. The problem with the current permit, and they are going through a permit extension, they'll be coming to the planning commission, I don't know when we'll get there, before we get the calendar year perhaps, but that's another thing we want to tighten up from the current use permit conditions, to establish some, some standards and datum that are easily, more easily verifiable than the current conditions.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you. May I ask you?
Anna.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, they are not caught by a, a dust devil or a wind devil out there. About two weeks ago, my husband and I photographed, it looked like there was a fire coming off of the southern end of the Baylands, and it was between 7 and 8 o'clock at night, it was continuous, it wasn't windy, they were dumping late at night, and they didn't have their water truck there. So they were in total violation, and it's not just by chance that the dust leaves the area, and they continued the following day without the use of the, or the, we saw the water truck, it just sat there and watched while it dumped, spilled straight up into the air, and sat there while the next guy came and dumped, and went straight into the air. So they're not using, maybe they occasionally go and put the water on the, on the roads that they travel on, but the soils that are being dumped right now are dry, this is a dry season, and they are being kicked up into the air, and it looks like a fire. So they are very much in violation of air quality standards, and I can present you with the photographs, with the real-time...
You have the time on the photo.
What do you call it? Video camera work of what they're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so that, this is the first we've heard of that, so I think, from staff's perspective, that would have been timely, two weeks ago when it was occurring, to let us know, and we certainly would have done everything possible to get out there. It's, it's helpful to hear it now, but it doesn't really give us a lot of opportunities to, to enforce or to correct it.
Yes.
Well, let me ask, in, in this case, and if it's after hours and city hall is closed, and maybe this is to you, Lisa, is it appropriate for somebody to call the 467-1212 number to let the dispatcher know what's going on, and...
Absolutely, and then we can get an officer to respond, and, and, you know, they can get out there and call the on-call or call Randy directly. So yes, that is, that is very necessary. If it is occurring, they need to call the, the dispatch number.
And so maybe that's something we can put on our blog, and then the city website, and then maybe our newsletter to kind of help with that, and, and maybe the quarry also of some of these, some of these complaints, where, you know, they're not bottled up for a month when we're on hiatus, and...
Yeah, it's a great point, sir, because that's exactly how you do stormwater discharges. That's how we report the stormwater discharges on the website, it says to call Public Works during the workday, to call...
I'm going to...
Or something like that.
Even in our TV...
I'm going to make just a quick comment. Friday evening, 5 o'clock, I was coming home, down 101, and there was dust clouds coming off the UPC soils site, and I actually pulled off, drove around, and went up to the gatehouse and talked to them about getting water on the site. They had to leave site to go get water. They don't, their water truck doesn't have a source there, so they've got to go over and across the freeway and under to get water. And then I came up, and there was a plume coming from the quarry, and I have video of what was coming out of the quarry. Poor quality video, but video nonetheless. Both of them, I did notify Randy right away, and, because I was quite upset coming into Brisbane. It, the air quality was horrible, horrible. And it wasn't just the UPC site, which was my first thought of culprit, it was actually the quarry was even worse. And both of them were, were egregious. So I did make a phone call, and I do recommend that everyone, when they're coming home or they see this happening, make the phone call, because it's really, really important. We need to make sure that both are operating where it's safe for us to be breathing the air.
Ma'am, and if I may, tag onto your comments, I, I really appreciate the fact that you did call me, because, as you know, I was headed back into town picking up my high schooler, and it allowed me to be on-site within five to 10 minutes of our conversation as we were talking there, and that's the best time for us to get out there and really try and figure out what's going on, and to try and work with the operators to get to a better situation. And so that, that's extremely helpful, and I, I hope you do continue to do it.
Actually, and I would definitely follow up on the comments that Terry made, I even drove one day to quarry, actually twice. One time I went, I, I think what they need to do to do the entire area, maybe they do water the front that you can easily see, and maybe in the back they don't. One time I drove around and I really, they started chasing me, because I'm, I'm supposed to go to the guard section, section, and introduce and get permission to enter. I didn't, I just sneaked in, I'm not sneaking in, just drove in, but the effect was that. But the second time, definitely the gentleman stopped me and said, I need to get permission. But it's a concern. It's, this is not a incident, a one-time incident.
No.
My report's going to the Air Quality Board.
Okay, but I think we need to move on with other items, this is a lot of items.
Yeah, Carolyn Parker, I have an issue before Oral Communications.
Two very quick things. I don't know if anyone's been up at the ridge, but there's actual, some kind of trucks, of vehicles that actually pour dirt into a mound, and, and I think there's no dust control there. I say dust all the time, so it, have you seen it? There, there's like two... There's like two, I don't even know what they're called, and they pour dirt in it and then the dirt pours into the pile. So there's this huge area where dirt is just coming down.
A sieve?
Down. I don't know what it is.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, those are the crushers that are on site. There are two to three rock crushers are on site to get it down to the appropriate size for backfill.
Okay. So anyway, I'm just a little concerned about the dust up there. The second thing is Sierra Point, there's a lot of people who are going to Sierra Point for the first time and maybe the only time. And as they're driving out of Sierra Point from the parking lots onto, I don't know what the street is called, there's no reflectors. So if it's like night, you cannot see as the cars turn. And I have almost gone into the wrong lane because I never could see that lane. I think all it needs are some reflectors because it's very dark there. People have, they're coming from a party situation and I think they're going to not find their way out if they've had a couple of drinks.
Maybe the chief of police wants to comment on that.
But, but the truth is, but the truth is, you know, I think all they have to do is put orange reflectors or yellow reflectors. That's all.
Maybe.
So this is another one of those great opportunities, sir, that we've put on the website and tried to reach out to people. It's called Government Outreach. You can access it on your Android, you can access it on your Apple, you can access it on the website. If you've got a comment like this, you can put it in or of course you can choose to wait till the council meetings and come in. Either way, it gets to us, using the Government Outreach program, it gets to us much faster. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Mayor, we could do a DUI checkpoint out there, maybe fund the...
Yeah, well, you know, based on that, Lady of California City's resolution, we would lose money doing that.
Well, congratulations, Cliff. This is absolutely the longest oral communications I've ever experienced.
This is really important for us to realize. It's important to hear them. At the same time, we've not been able to really go into agenda items. Maybe we need to make sure we, how to call it, monitor our three minutes limit.
We had been out for quite some time, so that's why we had the backlog, I think, of items.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. So next on the agenda, we have some proclamations and presentations. And the first one is a proclamation recognizing World Breastfeeding Awareness Month. And do we have anyone who is from that organization here tonight? We do not. Okay. So I'm just going to just read the title of the proclamation. And it's a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing breastfeeding awareness month. And we'll forward that to the appropriate person. All right, we have another proclamation. And this proclamation is recognizing September 12th as, no, September 2012, sorry, as National Preparedness Month. And so I will read this one in its entirety. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing September 2012 as National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of the City of Brisbane to prepare their homes, businesses and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And in whereas, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Ready Campaign, Citizens Corps and other federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of the City of Brisbane and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of the City of Brisbane are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and asked to review the Ready Campaign websites at ready.gov. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Brisbane hereby proclaim September 2012 as National Preparedness Month and encourages all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared city. And Randy, I believe I will give this to you.
I'll have to grab that, sir, that's why.
Okay.
Maybe have a, even though we're kind of into it, but it's always good to hear from our OES department head on his annual preparedness spiel because I think it's quite appropriate and very good.
Boy, we'd love to get more attention on this matter, sir, but I think I'm going to have better luck if I have the police officers pull people over on the way out of town to make sure they have their emergency preparedness kit. I didn't get quite as much laughter as I thought on that. I may have to rethink that idea. It seems like one way to make it happen, a dollar for those who have it, a ticket for those who don't. No, the one item I do want to highlight, though, is that the community emergency volunteers are now changing their names over to certs to recognize the fact that that's a nationally and regionally utilized term. And they are also working together with plans right now, and they're doing a lot of this very independently, which is fabulous because we're kind of short on staff, to put together an event around the Great Shakeout that happens in October. So we're looking forward to that and we'll get more information out on that as it comes out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Randy. All right, and our last proclamation is recognizing Dale...
The most important one, sir.
That's correct. Upon his retirement. And it gives me great honor to read this proclamation. So Dale, you want to come on up, please? A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing team leader Dale Allen upon his retirement. Whereas Dale Allen, a native son of San Francisco, serendipitously immigrated with his family to the city of St. Louis 55 years ago. And whereas Dale has devoted 31 work years to public service, a noble calling that involves providing a broad range of services that are an integral part of our citizens' daily lives. And whereas 11 of those work years were spent providing quality service to the citizens of Brisbane. And whereas Dale's tenure with the city includes employment as the first utility team leader and the effort involved in institutionalizing that position. And whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities and services are of vital importance to the health, safety and well-being and comfort of the citizens of the City of Brisbane. And whereas such facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, such as Dale, who are responsible for operating and maintaining these systems. And whereas the combination of Dale's technical knowledge and his ability to interact positively with Brisbane's community resulting from his half-century plus of living and raising a family here will be a challenge to replicate, definitely. And whereas the city wishes him good health and enriching retirement with his wife Sue. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Brisbane thanks Dale Allen and hereby declares him an honored resident of Brisbane. Welcome forever at all city events and considered for all purposes as a resident in perpetuity of our grateful town. Dale, it's a great honor. Dale, if you could say a few words, please.
It's a different chapter in my life now. It's going to be something that I've been dreaming for 30 years to do. I won't be getting phone calls at 1:00 in the morning or anything like that. But my experience here was really good, working with Randy, Jerry, Karen and my staff, you know, because it's a team and that's very important. Learned a lot and I will definitely miss Brisbane, but I will be back. I have a lot of family here, so. But it's just another chapter. I want to go boating, ride my motorcycle, fishing, and I'm going to take up hunting. So, and the honeydew list. But thank you very much. It's been great.
May I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
I think you probably can add salsa to the boating experience. No, but I just want to say something. Anytime I've seen you, I am, I feel calm. I really do. You have such a wonderful disposition of calmness and just confidence. I admire that about you. And I want to thank Sue for sharing him with us for 31 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, I just want to say that not only are we losing a great city employee, but we are losing great neighbors. That we've been neighbors for virtually the entire time that you've lived here. Yeah, right. And it's really going to make a big difference in the street and it's not going to be the same and we'll really miss you and we wish you the best up there in Northern California, but we're sorry to see you go.
Clark?
Dale, you know, I'm going to miss you and you know, I've had a few conversations. I said, don't sell your house, man, you sold it. I think you'll be back. It's going to be different. It's going to be different.
Something that we've always, my wife and I, when we were dating, always went up there and we love it up there. I love Brisbane, but it's something to change, you know, and try it. It's like the old Brisbane where we're going, you know? No sidewalks, you know? They still have where you can hook up your horse.
You're really going old school, Dale.
Hitch and post.
Yeah. But no, thank you. It's been great. You know, I learned a lot, especially working with the team that we have. And I always, and I'm bringing my stars.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Dale, yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't think you were allowed to do that. I thought you had to leave the stars.
These are the small ones I made.
But he's honorably Brisbane resident, wherever he goes.
Dale, if you could just stay one moment because, well, first of all, I just wanted to say, you know, just thank you for all of your work for the city and, you know, when you're a Public Works employee, you know pretty much every single person in town because you're on their street and you're doing something next to their house. And of course, then the neighbors, they all come up to ask for advice about certain things. And like Seppie said, I mean, you were someone that was, you know, that could calm the situation for any resident. But yeah, your boss, Randy Barrows, got a little something for you.
Actually trying to equip photo with you.
Oh, okay.
Dale, yeah, right.
I think, I think it's called...
I know we're late, but Dale only retires once.
Right. I want to have a picture of this.
I think it's ex-boss now, huh? A former.
Right, yeah.
Here's the one that's going to give him up at 1:00.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Caltrain application for electronic billboard. Clay, do you have a staff report or we just go right into the presentation?
Caltrain is here to make the presentation. Staff will be ready to respond with the questions that come up during the presentation. Any issues with regards to Caltrain, we'll be processing.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for taking a few minutes to listen to our project tonight.
And you are...
My name is Jamie Ackman. Sorry, I should have started there. I work for Caltrain. I am here tonight to talk about the All Vision Digital Advertising Billboard proposal that we're bringing forward. Just to give you a bit of context as to what we are proposing, we went out on a public procurement looking for a contractor that could help us identify parcels of land that would be of good use for a digital advertising purpose, entitle that land, and then they will seek contracts with actual advertising procurers. So this is a company, All Vision, that has worked with lots of public entities, both in the state of California. They work with MetroLink down south, they work with Caltrans, and they've also worked with other public entities throughout the country. So they understand the process that's unique to us as a public organization, working with other public organizations to entitle the land. This is vital to Caltrain because it gives us an opportunity to supplement a much-needed fair box revenue and operating revenue for a system that has an ongoing structural deficit. The way that the entitlement would break down, we would be receiving a percentage of the proceeds which would go to our operating fund and we would be proposing to split that with the municipality that the digital billboard is located in. We're working with similar, on similar projects up and down the corridor. Brisbane is one of several cities that we're talking to right now, including South San Francisco, San Mateo, Redwood City and the City of San Jose. Right now, we are proposing one structure in the City of Brisbane. It would have two sides. It's about 14 feet high, 48 inches wide. I believe that's fairly standard as far as digital displays go. And it would be located on our right of way on our property on the east side of 101, south of the Sierra Point Parkway. The location was chosen very carefully, we believe, to minimize the impact to residents and businesses in the community and to really target those traveling along 101. I'm going to turn the presentation over at this point to our manager of real estate, Brian Fitzpatrick, who can walk you through the program itself.
Thanks, Jamie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Fitzpatrick, manager of real estate and property development for Samtrans Caltrain and the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. As Jamie had mentioned, let me see if I can, there we go, look at that. As Jamie had mentioned, we're looking at doing this in a variety of selected areas, Brisbane being one of the best because of the proximity to 101 and the ability to have a really good sign. Generally, once we choose a location for a sign and we speak to the local municipality and determine if there is interest and it comes into my ballpark to negotiate a business deal along with our consultants from All Vision, we'll be working with a variety of people to do this. I thought one of the things that'd be good to speak to you about is how this all works. So basically, Caltrain's the landowner. We'll own the land. What we will do is we will work with the city, the local city, which is the entiling entity, in this case, the City of Brisbane, to go through your entitlement process. Typically, that results in a development agreement that talks about the terms and conditions of the development of this board. It's the city's decision based on its rules and regulations on the where, what, how and why of this board. You know, where it is, how big it is, what it looks like, all those things. We go through your process to do that. And then at the end result of that, we have a site where we've targeted a specific type of billboard and a specific, you know, terms and conditions for it. We then go out in the market and we create a public-private partnership where we bring on a billboard company. The billboard company would build the billboard as prescribed in our agreement, would then sell the advertising and generate revenue. That's the general structure of how this would work. So there's really three main stakeholders. A landowner, which is Caltrain, the City of Brisbane, which is the entiling entity, determine what goes on its land, then an operator of the billboard itself. Now, what we would say are the benefits to a, to a local entity in this situation is, as in any public-private partnership, we think it's fair that the revenue gets shared. So Caltrain would be splitting, you know, sharing the revenue as the landowner, pretty important component of this. Brisbane, we propose that we would share a percentage of the revenue, 20% of our net revenue, we would propose to share. And then I think even more importantly, with these digital billboards that we're talking about, there is a real opportunity for the message to be changed quickly and efficiently. So for example, in an emergency situation, an Amber Alert, let me flip this so everybody can see it, an Amber Alert, a natural disaster, homeland security, police or fire, something like that, we can automatically flip the board to put up these community messaging things. Also, there is an opportunity for some components of the advertising on that sign to be community messaging, not of a type of an emergency-type thing, but maybe advertising this meeting or something else that the community wanted to bring out, maybe a local fair or a local event, a local market, something along that nature. So we think that there is an opportunity for there to be real community benefits from something like this. And then finally, quickly, as Mr. Mayor had said when we first stepped up here, at this juncture, we have not yet submitted... at this juncture, we have not yet submitted an application. We wanted to come to this council and present to you what we had in mind, hopefully provide some background to what's going on there. And then we will be following the city's typical process, would be to formally submit an application. And there would be a SEQA process that would go on. The city of Brisbane would be the lead agency for the SEQA compliance. And then finally, based on the direction of staff, we would enter into development agreement or some other appropriate agreement to codify the terms and conditions of what this would look like. So hopefully, that gives you a pretty good idea of what it is we're looking at. And I would welcome any questions you may have for Jamie or for me or for our sign consultant.
Questions?
I do too, after you, please.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the obvious question is, you know, so what's in it for us? And that comes down to the shared revenue part.
Absolutely.
And so do you have any kind of projections on that to give us a sense of what we're talking about?
Yeah. I could take you back to the slide. We've done some very, we've had our consultant do some very broad-based, we've had our consultant do some very broad-based revenue projections for us. Obviously, when we do something like this, we won't know what the final revenues will be until we bid this out to the private sector. But we're assuming that revenues are going to be in the range of $130,000 to $180,000. That really depends, again, on the bids we get. We're hoping that those are actually conservative numbers, but we'd assume that would be Brisbane's share. And then I also wouldn't discount the community messaging opportunities and the emergency opportunities as well. These are opportunities to get something like an Amber Alert up there immediately for the community.
Yes. I don't know whether I need to disclose or participate in this on my being on a TA board. Is there something that I need to be...
You know, we're...
Just wanted to make sure to be covered our end.
As the city attorney.
The city attorney can respond. You're not being asked to make any decision tonight.
Okay. Okay. No, but I do have questions.
Publications.
Thank you. Caltrain does pretty much everything based on ridership. We have one of the lowest ridership, and we're normally on the chopping block. And yet, we are one of your number-one choice of putting board up there. Can you tell me what's the logic in this?
Absolutely. The analysis that we did up and down the right-of-way was, you know, independent of our primary goal of providing passenger service up and down the line. Obviously, what we are doing is we are scouring the right-of-way and scouring opportunities to look at ways of filling up a cup that's now not all the way full because Caltrain doesn't have a dedicated revenue source. So what we did is we looked up and down the right-of-way, looked at the opportunities where we would have good opportunities to put a billboard. And really, the criteria are significantly, you know, different than ridership. Basically, where you have good opportunities for billboards is where we own property that has a good opportunity to interface with either a highway or a highly-used public road. And so right here in Brisbane, where we own the property, you have great interface with Highway 101, which creates a great opportunity here.
And have you looked at any location in San Francisco, which they have the ridership all along?
Yes, ma'am. We've looked for opportunities all up and down our right-of-ways. As Jamie had mentioned earlier, we are, we've identified numerous opportunities. And we are speaking to a variety of different cities, going through the same process we're going through with Brisbane, explaining to them the advantages and disadvantages of this.
Okay. Is this a normal split, 20%?
Yes, ma'am. That's what our consultant has worked with municipalities in a number of areas. And this is what, you know, they've recommended as being consistent with what they've seen in other areas, something that we feel is a fair split, given the various roles of the various parties that I spoke about at the front end of the presentation. Yeah, it's also consistent with, you know, we're doing a public-private split. So there's also revenue that will be going, obviously, that the billboard company will be, you know, collecting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I had to say that the Economic Development Subcommittee did review this and then said, you know, thought that we should move it forward to the council to take a look at it. One of the biggest aspects that stood out, I think, to us as a committee was that it's not really going to be visually seen by our residents. Because I think a lot of people recalled, and both Cliff and I recalled, that there was this loud billboard out there on the east side of 101, on the north side up there by Tunnel Road or Beatty. You know, we didn't want that to happen. And so with these, or actually where it's located or where the potential location would be, would be a lot less impact to our residents from a light point. And plus, these new ones, they can tone it down during the night. So, and we said, well, probably good for the whole council to see this, didn't move it forward. So I just wanted to convey that to the council that we did see it.
Any other questions for...
To have a comment.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah. No, I just wanted to say that historically, Brisbane hasn't been all that keen on billboards that you probably know. A lot of public composition, particularly because of the visual pollution. And that one particular sign that Clark refers to was pretty awful. I think the location of this is conceivably acceptable from the visual point of view because it's not the sort of thing that probably, you know, 95% of the residents will even see because of its location. But we want to check that for sure before we go ahead. The other thing is, because of that, I actually don't think it's going to be very useful for community things for Brisbane. It'll be great for, you know, something happens on the freeway and they want to inform people in addition to all the other signs they have now. It would be useful for that purpose. But I don't think that's much of a selling point because of its location and therefore the lower visual pollution for Brisbane. And that also means it's not particularly useful for, you know, community communication purposes. So that would be my first sort of cut on it anyway.
Could be for the farmer's market, though.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. But he was mentioning emergency things.
Right. No, it wouldn't.
I don't see it being useful in that respect.
Dale, is it? Brian, sorry, I should have wrote that down. Brian, if you can come up, please. Yeah, I want to, I want you to bring up the slide that has this picture.
Okay, let's see here.
The location.
Yeah, the location.
There we go.
Okay, so, you know, I want to address Councilmember Miller's comment about having it not be, you know, something that would be beneficial in regards to getting the word out for a community-type of event. Is it possible to move the location a little bit further south? And the reason I mention is because Sierra Point has not fully been built out yet. I mean, we're looking at opportunities to have more public things out at Sierra Point. We're kind of in that process of trying to evaluate what we would like to see out there with the remaining land that hasn't been developed yet. Perhaps that could provide then that opportunity, if you're driving on the freeway, there's the sign, "Take this exit because this event is here." Maybe it might not be so useful for letting people know about an event that's in Brisbane because they would have already left the freeway before they reached the sign. And of course, if they're coming from the north, they're not going to see it either. But this could help for Sierra Point. Brian, what do you think about that?
You know, we have done, we had asked our consultant to take a look at the billboard from the perspective of the optimal location. And they did look at it at a number of things, primarily, you know, two things. One is the ability to minimize the impact on, you know, surrounding people. And then secondly, the ability to maximize capturing ridership in that area. We could certainly go back and look at the other location you suggest in that light. I am pretty comfortable that they've gone through a good process and that we may get less benefit from a revenue perspective. And, but, you know, we will...
Yeah, I think that would be good. Because, you know, when I... Bless you. When, you know, when I look at the site, I mean, for the location of the sign, sure, it's right next to the freeway. But, and if you're not thinking of Brisbane and thinking of Sierra Point and trying to advertise for that particular location, yeah, you're going to pick this spot here. So putting it all, you know, taking our feedback and wanting to have this be something that could potentially happen, I'd like for you to take a look at that.
Sure. If I could add, we would certainly, as part of the SEQA process, look at all of the options around the billboard design. But one thing that is a consideration is where our property is in relationship to the freeway. And as you move further south, our property moves quite a bit further from the freeway so that it would be difficult for people on the freeway to see the sign.
You know, I hear what you're saying, you know? And I think of the signs that currently exist in the area, and they're off the freeway. It looks, I mean, granted, I'm just eyeballing it here. But it looks fairly, even if you moved it south, it seems like you're closer to the freeway than the current billboards. But this billboard would be, let's talk a little bit about the size and compare it to something that's already out there. What kind of size sign are we looking at compared to ones that currently exist?
You know, probably, I'm not as familiar with all the signs that are up in Brisbane. I could have our consultant come up and chat a little bit. But I think generally, the best thing to look at from a size perspective would be in Redwood City, where the old Circle Star Theater was. There is a digital billboard that's out there. That would probably be a good example of what we'd be looking to put here, something of about, you know, that size, rotating, you know, at about that degree, something of that nature.
Okay. And one of the things that Councilmember Conway talked about was that these signs are different than the older digital signs. Can you explain a little bit about the light pollution that is, that comes from those signs?
Well, two things we can talk about is, one, when we get into the details of doing this board, as Jamie mentioned, we'll do a SEQA study. And in that study, we'll talk about specifics of light pollution. All these things are going to change depending on the angle, the type of board we put up, the sign, where it's located. So what we, you know, we'd prefer to do would be to come back to this council with a very clear and definitive SEQA document that talks about all those things and then has something available for you to review that's more tangible rather than something anecdotal we may, you know, speak about now based on, you know, a lot of unknowns? If that works for you?
Sure. Sure. You mentioned the sign that's at the Circle Star. That type of illumination, that is what you would expect if this...
I think it's a good template.
Okay. And then, you know, Councilmember Richardson talked about the percentage of, you know, what our take would be. If another city negotiated a higher percentage, would you then offer that to the city of Brisbane as well? I mean, we're trusting you saying that this is what it is. And if Redwood City gets a higher percentage, I mean, that wouldn't be good relations.
We certainly want to be fair to all the cities along the railroad. And, you know, first, let me say that we're not very far along in the financial negotiations process with any city. So 20% has been what we have offered to all of the cities. So far, none have come back with any requests to look at that number. I wanted to introduce Alex Bellinson. I'm sorry, I want to call him Benson. He's with the All Vision consultant. And he can probably speak more specifically to your question about the type of lighting.
Very quickly, good evening, council. On the size of the sign, this is a standard 14-foot-tall by 48-foot-wide billboard. These are the most common ones that you will see along the freeway. It is smaller than the digital signs you see at the foot of the Bay Bridge. And it's smaller than the sign that you see as you're driving north from South San Francisco on the left side of the freeway. It's a little smaller than that sign. That's roughly a 20-foot by 60-foot, so fairly larger sign. With respect to the light, the technology now allows to maintain a very minimum light above the ambient light. So there are light sensors on the sign as well as some measures against where it is on the time of day. And it is kept at .3, .03 candle foot above ambient. What that means is it's just bright enough to be perceptible. It's not as bright as the older signs where they just crank up the brightness to be visible. So as you get into evening and nighttime, the light continues to come down so it isn't so blinding and so bright.
Okay.
All of this will be addressed through this SEQA document. We actually will present a full light study with the positioning of the sign, the height of the sign, the visible distance. And you'll see, graphically represented, what the light would look like at different distances from the sign and from different points from both directions.
Okay.
My not, you're not the point of my question directly. At the same time, I really appreciated Cliff's comments about making sure our Sierra Point is taken into consideration. Our job is to protect our city, no doubt. So knowing that we're planning that area, I don't want to see something that is going to be to our detriment. Even though it's your location, it might be convenient for you, but number-one goal is to make sure our city is protected. That's, I appreciate that and all of your consideration. That needs to be looked at very carefully.
Way in down here. I agree with what Ray said about 95% of Brisbane won't see it. But that's almost not in my backyard. We'll put it in South San Francisco and they can see it. I find the electronic signs very large, tacky, distracting. And to turn the corner on that freeway to come around and see a big electronic sign, it's not like next to the Circle Star Theater where there's businesses and road signs and a lot of stuff going on. That is going to be, "Welcome to Brisbane, it's Las Vegas." I just, I don't see where it fits into advertising for the marina. I don't think electronic lit-up billboards are what attracts somebody to a marina location. I would love to see a picture of what it would look like in the dark. I find them very distracting, very annoying. And I'm glad they're in South San Francisco and not here. So I don't see, I understand the need for revenue and the bonus that would be. And if you weren't offering that bonus, I don't think anybody would want it here. And so I think we really need to weigh that and look at what Brisbane citizens want and get it out there that this is in the works. By definition, you want the highest, most intrusive area that you can put an advertising sign. That's why they call it advertising. And so it would be in your face right there as you're coming down the freeway. And I'm not sure that that's what we want along the causeway. I don't think that's right for a bayfront location. So, but I'd love to see what it, what your theory, what it would look like and how dim you could make it so it's not distracting. We have enough accidents on that corner as it is where freeway speeds slow down and it becomes a traffic nightmare. And putting a large sign that's even more distracting, I think, is not a good thing to do on a freeway right-of-way.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up again?
Yeah.
I really feel uncomfortable about this. I really do feel, particularly in light of knowing that we are always on the chopping block. We're not important station. We are not. And now we are being looked at a very important spot for Caltrain. The two, I'm having a hard time putting it together. The 20%, I'm selling my soul for 20%. I'm having a hard time with that.
If I may, you know, the Caltrain right-of-way is along the railroad tracks. And there's only so many areas where the railroad tracks come near the freeway, where there's going to be that type of visibility. And this is one of those locations. You know, Caltrain, it doesn't make sense for them to put it in locations where they're not going to get the type of visibility. But I hear what you're saying, Terry, about, you know, having that, that type of intrusiveness while you're driving. But the technology is different. But the technology is different today. And so you're right, we need to see that, and we need to, I think, have the process play itself out. I mean, it'll go before the Planning Commission, correct?
Well, there's probably a couple of different ways, and maybe, Hal, do you want to speak to that?
We have a very peculiar situation on our hands with regard to the land use regulations. The city zoning ordinance contains a general prohibition against billboards from the history that Councilmember Miller mentioned. But by the same token, when the sign ordinance was amended, actually some years ago, there was a provision put in that would allow the city council to grant basically a, by resolution, permission for a sign to be installed. The actual language exempted from the entire application of the ordinance is any sign placed on private property by the property owner or with such owner's consent which have been expressly authorized to be located thereon by resolution of the city council. And we went back through the records of when this was adopted, and apparently it was intended to simply give the council the authority to authorize a sign that might otherwise not be permitted under the zoning regulations. So there's no process described in connection with this. It is by resolution. If we move forward, we'd have to have some further discussions, you know, among ourselves and also with Caltrain's on exactly what our process would be. The resolution, if that's what we do, would be subject to the same conditions and terms and requirements as would a development agreement, and it would also include the revenue aspects, and it would also require SEQA because it is a project. But the difference is that it would be solely within the jurisdiction of the city council. There's nothing here that says it's referred back to the Planning Commission because essentially the whole procedure has been exempted from the entire sign ordinance to begin with. So it is a very weird situation, but by the same token, I think we can craft a process where the council, you know, can conduct a notice public hearing. We would have a resolution that's going to look pretty much like a development agreement other than it wouldn't be referred back to the Planning Commission for initial recommendation. And the city council, you know, on your own can say you want to send this matter to the Commission for at least review and comment. But that's up to you. There's, the ordinance right now simply exempts the whole procedure from the sign regulations, and it would allow the council to grant an approval. So as far as the process, I think that's something that the council can kind of craft on your own in that regard. So it is a rather strange situation, but it is, short of amending the ordinance, it is a way around the general prohibition against billboards. And I guess in some respects, the reason John and I like it is that it can be applied to this situation only. I think if we went in and said, "All right, we're going to look at this, we're going to create some exception for billboards," then we get into an issue of spot zoning, and if you create one exemption, do you have to, you know, if you allow one, do you need to allow others? This would allow the council to deal with this situation individually and without worrying about setting a precedent under the zoning ordinance or amending the general prohibition so that it might be applied elsewhere in the city. So I think we would have to figure out the process, and we would come back to the council with some more specific recommendation. But that's kind of what we have right now. We've never used it, to my knowledge. So I think the council can simply establish the procedure for adoption of a resolution along with the content of that resolution in whatever manner you deem appropriate. The purpose of the meeting tonight is not to get into the procedural technicality, but simply to see whether there's any interest on the part of the council to even move forward at all with this proposal, and if so, in what respects. So regardless of what you decide tonight, if you do want to move forward, this whole resolution process would come back to you. But I think there's no point in us trying to figure that out if the council is not receptive to the proposal to begin with.
Question for staff?
Yeah.
You say that a resolution's the way around the ordinance against billboards and signs, but if we, as a council, don't want the sign, let's say, there's nothing that prevents us from not hearing the application.
Oh, absolutely, that's the reason. You could say tonight, "We're not interested," and that would be the end of it. There is, unlike others, this, while it creates some kind of weird procedure, it also avoids any claim by the applicant of entitlement. It's now the situation where someone can come before you and say, "Well, the zoning ordinance allows this particular use as a permitted use." So the only way the city can deny it is if you make some kind of findings or whatever. There's no presumption here of entitlement, and it's entirely up to the council as to whether you want to proceed with a resolution or not. But there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that would give the applicant a basis for arguing that by not moving forward, you are somehow denying them of some land use entitlement or some development right, because that right is not there to begin with. So in that sense, it kind of protects the city. It also gives us the ability to deal with this on an individual basis. You can subject it to full public review, full SEQA review if you wish. I think you could even refer it to the Commission for some review and comment as a land use. But I think essentially, the sign ordinance has given you a tool if you wish to use it or not. If you don't, then you haven't denied anyone any fundamental rights in this case.
The term of this agreement is for 10, 15 years? Exactly how many years?
No agreement yet.
I know, but proposed. What are the length of agreement that cities decide to? I know it's not five years, it's not...
We would propose that we would enter into a 20-year lease with the owner-operator of the sign board.
20 years, thank you.
Hal, if, if there were issues with the sign that the city was not happy with, what kind of recourse would we have?
We would discuss that and build some process into the resolution. I would, without calling it as such, I would equate it as something similar to a use permit with various conditions or requirements that if they're not met, you would have the ability to revoke it after, you know, unusual notice and hearing procedure. But in that regard, I think we're, in some respects, we're dealing with a blank slate here, and we can put in whatever conditions and contingencies that the council wants to include. I do think in all fairness, because there is a substantial capital investment involved in this, that if you did give an approval without calling it a use permit, you'd also have to recognize you're conferring some investment in some rights so that if you wanted to revoke it later, it couldn't simply be for some arbitrary reason that you didn't like the sign. There would have to be some violation of a condition or some other impact that would justify for it. Just as an analogy, revoking a use permit if you had used the use permit process.
Okay. All right. I'm going to open this up to the public if there's any other comments. Okay, so I have a slip. Now, you know, we, it is, we are getting kind of late in the process, and we haven't even gotten to the consent calendar yet. So I'm going to ask everyone who does speak before the council if you can be respectful and keep it to, you know, three minutes or less. That would be most appreciated. Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is John Christopher Burr, and I'm proud to be a lifelong resident of Brisbane. From what I can tell, looking at the pictures here, there are some wetlands that some local people restored that are just south of this area. And ducks are there, stingrays have been sighted there, cranes, other things like that. And I'm not sure how they might be impacted. And in the same vein, from what I'm seeing on this thing there from the picture, it looks like the light from this could actually go toward the lagoon, too. And, you know, the lagoon is a big, big resource for wildlife. So because we have a lot of habitat, valuable habitat, and a wide variety of fish and birds and other living things around the area, I think it would be a good idea, before you go too far with this, to get all the major and the minor environmental groups to take a look at this and provide some input to see if this is really a good idea. Now, especially the Audubon Society, because there are flyways, you know, and I was just reading about this in the South Bay Restoration Project, how birds come and they use the bay and the environment around here for certain times of the year and not other times. So maybe this thing could be put in in such a way that you wouldn't, you'd turn it off or you'd dim it during their fly time where you wouldn't interfere with their breeding and mating and so forth. And in that vein, I think that it might be a good idea to do a test before you give final approval, too, you know, just put something up there and test it out and see what it looks like. This is in relation to the citizens objecting. Do some sort of a test and see how it really works out before anything that's final put in. My second point is, I've read some recent news articles recently, that's redundant, but anyway, and I believe that other cities get around $50,000 to $60,000 per month. So that would be more like $100,000 per month for two signs is the way I calculate that, not $130,000 or $180,000 a year. So I wouldn't even consider this sort of proposal for those kind of dollars. I think, you know, you'd be selling on it to sound for way too cheap. And lastly, if you decide to go through with this and you're creating this kind of revenue, I think it'd be a good idea to create two endowment funds, at least two, maybe more, and earmark some money for open space acquisition and long-term maintenance, perhaps maybe another endowment fund for recreation. So create some funds, you know, kind of, kind of do some things that are related to the environment, help the environment, and it helps the community all at the same time. I think that would be a good thing to do with some money and not, you know, use it on other things that will come up, you know, put earmarked right of way as much as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And thank you for staying within that a lot of time. All right. Michelle?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I don't think you're going to have to worry too much about, you know, what kind of deals they cut with other cities, because I can only think of two places where the Caltrain tracks cross 101, here and in South San Francisco. And South San Francisco is really probably not feasible because it's the overpass over Grand Avenue. And these signs are extremely lucrative for the owners. I called them a couple of months ago to find out how much it would be to advertise on one of those ones going at the end of the Bay Bridge, and it was very expensive. So if we decide to do that, I think that we really need to look carefully at all of the costs and get an independent study of what would, what Brisbane would get out of it. And the other part of that is, there are so few places left along the Bay Shore where you can see the bay. And you can drive from basically San Jose all the way to San Francisco, and the first time you see the bay now, where you really see the bay, is right there where they want to put the sign. And that would be so sad, because you can't see it in Burlingame anymore, you can't see it in South City, you can't see it, you know, there's like, you can't see it in Redwood City. I mean, there's really nowhere along that corridor that you get to see the bay. So now people coming to visit San Francisco, our world-class city, the first thing they see is Sign Hill where it says, "South San Francisco, the industrial city," and the next thing they'll see is a huge electronic sign in Brisbane instead of the bay. So, mixed feelings about this. And we, you know, we did vote in the general plan in 1994 not to have billboards in Brisbane. So it would be a landmark decision for the council to overturn that will of the people.
Okay. Dana? Oh, I'm sorry. You all right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I was in Mountain View the other day, and the blaring billboard that's there is very distracting, and I even caught myself looking in my rearview mirror to see this, what I hadn't, you know, the part of the billboard that I hadn't completely seen. I think this is a great hazard. I will remind you that we sat through many, 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 many hours of meetings in the preparation of the general plan, and it has to do, it's in the section on community character. Policy 35 that says, "Design new streets to be attractive and comfortable." I can jump to, and safely accommodate vehicular traffic. Sinage should all be considered as they contribute to community character, and then Program 35-F prohibits new commercial billboard sites and seeks to remove those currently in place. This isn't a sign like the name of a building, like putting the word "Hitachi" and the word "Exojet" on the same building. This is a frickin' billboard. This is a televised animated cartoon that will distract people from driving. And I also wanted to speak about the light pollution, because I was one of the people who helped Caltrains to re-vegetate that area. It was called Wetland Banking because they anticipated that they were going to do damage up in Vallejo, and it was Mr. Paul Buffico who brought us in to repair that wetland in that corner. And the other, you know, this is just egregious that you would even consider this as something that Brisbane would want. And the other issue is wind in that area, that the wind, as it comes off of San Bruno Mountain, whips right through there. The structure, you know, I'm sure it gets to be 60 miles an hour at times because it comes through our town at 60 miles an hour. So I think, as Ms. Salmon said, the public really has said what they think about billboards, and that to call it a sign instead of what it truly is as a way to get around the will of the people is pretty egregious. And I, for one, you know, I need money, but not in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Anybody else out there in the public? Okay. Council, more council discussion?
I'm not interested, sorry. Not for that money, not for that. I am not.
Well, there's some points that were brought up. You know, like, I think that would be addressed in SEQA and looking at it, you know, like how wildlife would be impacted, the wetlands and the fly zone. Do a test, see what it looks like before a final approval. It's always a way to do it, like, I think you use story poles and put lights on them to see just what it is that we're viewing. Certainly, Caltrain has, or Caltrain has a structural deficit, and I think that's one of the reasons for it, is they're looking for ways to alleviate it. And John is right that cities do get a bucket load of money somewhere in the $600,000, $700,000 range, from what I understand, you know, if that was... If that was to the city, but the whole idea behind this is to help fund Caltrain, which has a problem. So it comes down to, you know, looking at, is this something that we would support because of that? I mean, it's kind of looking at a greater good. I would look at the numbers of people impacted. I think it would probably only impact maybe one household. one household from a site point of view. But the technology has been perfected, perfected where the resolution is toned down with, you know, the, the light, the ambient light. So how effective that is, I don't know. I'm sure there's, there's examples that can be seen from that. But I think, just from a Caltrain perspective on, on that, is, I, I would like to at least study it, to get more information. You know, I don't want to just say no and close the door and say, "Get out of here," you know? I think, I think it's worthy of a study. I mean, there's some good, good parts that were brought up. Yeah, the general plan prohibits billboards and, you know, if that's, I'm not sure what the intent was. Does that meant everything, you know, then? I don't even think they had electronic signs back then, so I think we're thinking of traditional billboards when we're talking about that, mainly like what we had at Mazetti's Motel, I think, which is part of our history museum, so to speak. So anyway, I would, I would be in favor of at least doing a study on it.
And before I get the comments from the other council members, I just wanted to ask, Cal, I mean, by studying it, we're not obligated to do the sign? Okay.
May I add something to your funding issue about Caltrain? This is not going to solve Caltrain's situation. There is study, there are attempts for us to go further into making sure that maybe sales tax, maybe some, there is grander initiative to make sure Caltrain is fiscally solvent. This is just a drop in the bucket.
Well, you don't put all your eggs in the one.
But Brisbane is not the city to solve Caltrain problem all throughout the corridor.
I, I know.
I just wanted to make sure.
Except, I understand that. I mean, this is, I know that, you know, they're trying numerous things to, to do it. I mean, do I want to see Cal, Caltrain go away? Heck, no. I mean, I want to see it electrified, you know, their ridership, from what I understand, is going up and up every month, you know? I mean, so I think it's, it's very important, so, you know, you know, I just think it's worth looking at, that's, that's all.
I support you, that's right.
Or studying.
Yeah, well, I said it would be an uphill battle, right? And so, you know, we're, got a lot of resistance to, to this sort of thing among the public and in the tradition of the community. So I would be open to an application, but I wouldn't want to be very optimistic if I were in your shoes, so you need to know that. It may not be worth it. But I wouldn't want to say at this point, you know, forget the whole thing. I think it's, it's worth investigating, looking at all the issues that have been raised. That's what SEQA is supposed to be for. So I'm open to that, but I want to warn you, it, you know, the, the results might not be what you'd like in the end. I mean, that's, as you can hear, you heard it. So if you still want to go ahead, you know, proceed, and I'd be open to that.
Sarah?
I think you've heard where my views are on it, and I think, I think we owe it to the communities down the peninsula, as well as our residents, to avoid this kind of light pollution that's close to the bay. And I would not support this plan. I will certainly listen to a study if, if they feel so inclined to do it and take it under consideration. But on the face value of it and, and seeing what I have, I, I don't think Brisbane is the place for it, and I think it would be unfair to put that in our town, to our citizens.
All right. Yeah. I'm, I'm open for, for having it be studied. I think, I think Mr. Miller is correct, though. It would definitely be difficult to win over the community, but, yeah, I think we, we owe it to ourselves with the democratic process to, to, to hear it out and, and see what it all entails. I think there's a lot of information that still needs to be presented, and that the community needs to see that, council members need to see that. You know, I, I'm glad that Councilmember Conway talked about Caltrain's situation financially. And you're right, I mean, this, this is just a, you know, a drop in the bucket, but you add a few of those drops, and you, you do make a substantial impact on your overall budget. And, and that, and that was one of the things that we did talk about in the subcommittee meeting. Not everything that, that, that happens in a subcommittee meeting you bring to the, to the council, not that you don't want to, but you just, you can't say everything. But it was something that, that was raised, and I, I think it was, it was, it was a pretty significant percentage, when, if they're able to get all of the cities that are along that corridor to, to go along with it. And so, yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not making a decision tonight, and if we study it, we're not going to be obligated to, to say, "Yes, we have to do this." And so I say, "Yeah, let's, you know, put it together and bring it before the staff, and they'll inform the council, and we'll take it from there." All right. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Samtrans Service Plan. Oh, you're back.
So that's the, the thing about our agency, is that we wear lots of different hats. I also work for Samtrans as the communications manager, and I am going to speak now, just briefly, on the Samtrans service proposal. I'm here tonight with Aiden Hughes, who is our program manager for the Samtrans service planning process. The reason that we are bringing this to your attention now is that we've been engaged in an 18-month-long study of the entire 48 route system to look for ways to streamline and improve the efficiency. This is the third round of public outreach that we're doing. This, this is the part of the proposal where we, we have a solid understanding of what our system needs to look like today for our riders and in the future. And we are going to be seeking lots of public feedback on the proposal from city councils and other kinds of venues. So this is really the kickoff of the outreach process here tonight, and this presentation is intended to provide a snapshot of the plan and highlight some of the impacts and improvements that would be, that would affect the North County region, and then, of course, solicit your feedback and let people know where they can provide additional feedback directly to Samtrans. The purpose of the plan is simple. We want to give our riders more of what works, less of what doesn't, and we want to try some new things. I know that sounds really basic, but when we looked at the system, one of the things that we recognized was that we were operating a legacy system. The last time we had really done an overview of the system was more than 10 years ago. Travel patterns and commute patterns have changed substantially since then. Employment centers have changed, population centers have changed and grown, and so it was time to fit the service to the new reality, rather than trying to operate under old assumptions. We want to do less of what doesn't work, and some of that means taking away a couple of routes that aren't working right now, based on performance metrics. But a lot of that means realigning the routes, making adjustments to improve their efficiency and increase the ridership and effectiveness of that route. And we want to try some new things. That means exactly what it says. Transit is not a one-size-fits-all solution. So instead of operating fixed route traditional services throughout the county, we want to look at areas that would be, that would make good candidates for pilot projects to try some alternative kinds of services. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aiden Hughes, who will walk you through the details of the proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Aiden Hughes, the project manager for the Samtrans Service Plan for Samtrans. And as Jamie said, the, what we're, what we're looking to do here is to streamline our service, so that with improved frequency and more service, we can get increased ridership. And we're looking to you to increase ridership as a way to, to grow our service over time. So just a little bit of background to, as to why the, the need for change, I think Jamie summarized it well. There is a, the demographics in the county have changed in recent years. The population has grown. We're seeing commute patterns change quite, quite dramatically. There used to be a very strong commute from Samatail County into San Francisco. We've seen that reduce over time. We're getting fewer riders on our San Francisco routes. And one of the other need for us to change is returning to this question about the, the structural deficit. The structural deficit that was referred to earlier as Caltrain structural deficit is actually Samtrans structural deficit. Samtrans provides a significant contribution to Caltrain every year. Samtrans also has debt obligations related to, to BART, and at the same time, ridership is trending downward. So the, the service plan will in no way fix the structural deficit, but we do want to find a way to do more with the resources that we have. So living within our means, but establishing a basis for, for increasing ridership without spending additional resources right now. And we think that by, by providing that platform of an efficient service now, we also set the path for a wellness program for the future, a program that will, so we'd have a strong foundation for continual improvement over time. And rather than make this a snapshot, make the changes now and then wait and see, we'll continue to monitor the service over time, continue to reflect on or look at the riders' changing needs over time and meet those, look at the efficiency of our service, and address the financial conditions by growing our ridership, rather than by making service cuts. Excuse me. So this will be the, the first step toward making our system, our system healthier. In terms of the detail of the service proposals, you have a handout in front of you that, that details each of the routes and notes the particular, the specific changes on the routes. For, for anyone who wants to read more about the details, the, the draft Samtrans Service Plan is on the Samtrans website. The service proposals are, we've categorized them into these four categories. The first is a series of service improvements, which address the El Camino Real, improvements along the El Camino Real, as well as enhancing our core markets. So they're the, the cities that generate most of our ridership. It includes San Francisco, Daly City, Redwood City, Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, East Palo Alto. Then we're looking to modify our services, and that's really getting to this question about providing the service where the riders are and reflecting changes in land use over time. So while there will be some service reductions, because some routes are not serving the, the riders well, there, there will be schedule changes, some positive and some negative, and there'll be route changes, again, some positive and some negative. So there will be people who will see some, some reduced service because of where they live, but on balance, there's been an increase in the number of riders who get improved As Jamie said, we've, we've taken a very hard look at our, at the performance of all of our routes, and some are carrying some very low ridership. And very low ridership translates into having to provide very high subsidies for every rider that rides, that rides the service. And in the interests of living within our means, we've, the recommendation is that we will discontinue some services, because it will then provide us with resources to invest in improved services in other parts of our, of the county. And the, and we are proposing two new routes where we've identified the need, where we've identified demands that aren't currently met. And we're proposing two alternative service pilot programs, one in San Carlos and one in Pacifica. And in those two places, we're, we're going to pilot the use of demand-responsive service as opposed to fixed route, running on a fixed schedule, in order that, in order that we can investigate ways to reach some of the communities that, that we can't currently reach through our fixed route service. I don't intend to go through each of these, each of these bus routes, but this is on your, this is on your handout. We've broken the, we've broken the, the routes down by geography, so you can look at some of the specifics as, as they relate, in this case, to the North County. Just some of the highlights, some of the, a number of the routes will remain unchanged. Some will see increases in frequency and service. Two of the routes, two routes, the 123 and 1332 are candidates for discontinuation, and others are seeing changes, realignment and modification in order to make them more relevant to the, to the, to the riders' needs. The proposals that, that are included in the draft service plan are now moving through a comprehensive public outreach effort. This is one of a, a number of presentations that we'll be doing to city councils in order to get the word out. At the same time, we will be holding rider forums, public workshops, we'll be attending meetings at community colleges, and there will be a public hearing. So we'll also be meeting with the city managers and with, with city staff and other interested stakeholders. So the intention is that we want to, we want to get as, we want to get a, a response to the proposals that are out there, so that we can make modifications, understand how people are responding to, to these changes, so that the end, we can have something, not only that we think is working, but something that has, that has been vetted through the, through the community. So finally, we have the website that's available, where the, the report is available and all of our other materials, and there's an email and telephone line that you can reach us on. With that, I can take any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Aiden. You made a comment about getting fewer riders from Samatail County to San Francisco, and what, what about Caltrain itself? Have you seen a decrease there also on the Caltrain, or is there an increase? And maybe that's a question more for Jamie, I don't know.
Well, I, I can address that. We, we've seen a reduction in the, in the bus ridership into San Francisco. We've seen significant increases in Caltrain ridership, and there've, and there've been similar increases in BART ridership. And the proposal, the proposals that we're putting forward for, for the Samtrans Service Plan... And the proposal, the proposals that we're putting forward for the Samtrans service plan is to reduce some of the Samtrans off-peak services into San Francisco, where we're getting particularly low ridership, but making sure that the buses go to the places where people have alternatives, where they can pick up either Muni service, or BART service, or Caltrain service. So it's really making it more efficient rather than having what is currently something of an overlapping number of services.
Okay. And you said overall ridership is trending downwards as a system, and do you have the specificities on why that is happening?
It's, it's actually quite, it's actually quite difficult to be, to be specific as to why ridership is trending, trending downward. We saw a reduction in ridership in 2000, starting in 2008 with the recession. Since then, we've seen increasing ridership from Caltrain, but the Samtrans ridership has continued to decline, and not significantly, but it's not growing, and it's probably declining. Now, that might be that some parts of the economy are improving more rapidly than others. But we also feel that, that the, there's an opportunity for Samtrans to capture more of the market if it can increase its services in those places where we know riders want to ride. So if we can, if we can improve frequencies to every 15 minutes as opposed to every 30 minutes in those markets where we know we have riders, we think we can reverse that trend and begin to see ridership coming back. I think the reduction in Sam, in the, some of the San Francisco ridership is probably a longer-term trend as commute patterns are changing over time.
Okay. And then, third one that stood out for me is on the 121. You said you want to discontinue school trippers, and the 121 is through Southern Hills?
Yeah.
Maybe I can comment on the school trippers.
So some of our services will deviate from their fixed route in order to, to go to a, go to a school. And we've, in our analysis of that, of some of those services, we found that the number of trips that are being carried to the school are really low, and so that the, there's a very high cost to providing the, some of those services. And, and I mean, we have some extreme cases where we're providing service to schools when the catchment area has changed. So in fact, there are no riders. Now, this isn't one of them, but there's an example, as we look at all of our system, we haven't done this comprehensive look for a long time, and it allows us to see where the, what resource we're spending and how many riders we're getting, the bang for the buck, if you like, so.
Yeah. I have a comment, and I think Ray could chime in on this because he was around, always relays this fear, you know, like when Samtrans came into existence, Brisbane had a little bus service, and we'd had one in the 50s, and it kind of went away after a while, and then we had one in the early 70s to mid 70s, and it was, it was actually very efficient. A little bus service that would run up in the hills and everything like that, and it was well-used, and so the proposal in Cal, or Samtrans came along, was that Samtrans was going to take it over, and then the fear was, is well, gee, we're such a small town that, you know, this service is very specific for people, and that, you know, you're now a big conglomerate that's just being newly formed, and you find it, maybe you're not catering to the community the way it would, and then, you know, the first thing you can do is cut the service because you're finding that you're not running the routes efficiently like the prior service was, and that's exactly what happened. And it's like, because Samtrans didn't understand the community. And maybe that's kind of what's been happening on a large scale, is you have a large conglomerate come in that doesn't understand the needs of each community, you know what I mean? It's like, yeah, there's always going to be a rider from point A to point B, but you know, you got a lot of seniors, you got a lot of kids at school that go to school that need, you know, specific things that, you know, how the routes run. And I don't know, Ray, maybe you want to comment on that or not, but.
Of course.
Could be one of the problems.
Yeah. Well, I'd just follow up on what Clark said. I think I'd be even more explicit that, you know, when Samtrans was set up and they came into town, and we had a functioning, efficient bus service that used little, small buses, you know, vans kind of thing, we didn't use these big monster buses that Samtrans feels is the best way to go because, you know, it's no more expensive, is what they've been telling us all along. And when, and in order to get our support for Samtrans, a promise was made that we will not cut any local bus service, that we will continue all the things that you already have and will try to do better. That was the promise that was made, and obviously, not only has it not been kept so far, but your proposing here really slashes that promise. So from the point of view of Brisbane, you're screwing us, to put it bluntly. It may be great for the overall county and your overall balance of budget, but from Brisbane's point of view, you're really, you're socking it to us. I mean, the only bus we have going into San Francisco is the 292, and you're going to make that a nothing bus and not even have many stops in San Francisco? I mean, the whole thing is just anti-Brisbane from my point of view. And I think it's really, it just shows, as Clark was saying, you know, that the interests of the smaller communities are not of any interest to Samtrans. And the reason that Samtrans got into trouble, as you alluded to, was this stupid decision to take BART into the airport and for Samtrans to agree to pay the deficit. It was a dumb decision. A lot of us fought that at the time, but we lost that battle. And now we are paying the price for a stupid decision that was made. And so, I don't know, I think any way we can, we should fight these changes because they are really anti-Brisbane. I'm sorry to have to tell that, you're just a messenger, and it's not your personal fault, but that's how I see it.
Ray, I actually wrote here, screwing us.
Yeah. That's what, that's what it is. Absolutely.
I am in support of public transportation. I understand you guys are looking at this as a business model, and I respect that, and it's, I commend you for doing that. Looking at ridership, looking at business and forgetting that, yes, we might not have the ridership, but we do have public transportation needs. We do have that. Ignoring it, cutting service, and then come before us and say, we don't have money, put signs up there, it's going to help us. It is not helping us. This is such a, I cannot believe this, tonight, both of them together. This is what I'm trying to tell you guys.
So just, if I could just respond with, with one thing, we, the, the purpose of my being here is to, is to put some draft proposals before you in order that we can get comment. This isn't, so what, what, what we would like is to, you know, engage with you and go through the proposals. We'd like to understand what you, what you don't like, what you like, what areas that need improvement, and get your comments. And then we can, we'll take those on board, and we'll, we'll put them together with all the other comments. This is an outreach effort, it's not, this, I'm not coming to you with a final plan. It's a, it's a draft plan.
I understand that, but if past experience is any guide to what you are going to do, you're ultimately going to screw us. I'm sorry. I mean, I know you're saying all the nice things, all the right things, but whenever we've raised objections in the past, we were overruled. So am I expecting that you're going to respond in a positive way and deal with our concerns?
No.
I'm not too optimistic.
Instead of, Ray, instead of telling us what we don't like, we're going to tell you what we want. We want to have a public transportation that could take our kids, our community, from here to where they're supposed to go, by law to high school, by law to go to school, by law to have quality of life. We have absolutely no quality of life when it relates to public transportation. You have dropped us. You have dropped us. We are not important. We want that. We want that public transportation for our students to go to high school. They have their right.
I think I'm going to leave this to people who know the situation better than I do because I don't know the Samtrans system or what was promised. So I really don't have a comment, but well said to both the other council members who have spoken.
Yes, definitely well said. Aiden, are there some routes that run only at certain times of the day? Or like, like a morning and an afternoon, and then some where it makes sense maybe to run in, like midday? I'm trying to, you know, I'm just trying to think, you know, I mean, you know, maybe a certain route isn't very popular at 10 o'clock in the morning, but is very popular at seven and at eight, and then it becomes very popular at four and at five. But then there might be a certain route that could be very popular at 3 o'clock when school lets out. So that bus could be used for multiple routes. That's what I'm thinking at.
That is, yes, I think you've, you've kind of characterized the way that we're, that we're looking at this. We're looking at ways that we can make the best use of the, the resources we've got to meet the riders that, that want to be, that want to be served. So we are, that is part of our, that is part of our strategy. It's, there are some, sometimes it can be difficult to, to sort of turn a bus on and off because you have the, you have the cost of having to pay for the resort, the driver for the whole day, whether they are working for an hour or longer. We're bound by certain contractual obligations with our union to do that. So we're not, we don't always have the flexibility that you've described. We do have the flexibility to use different kinds of buses to serve communities, and that's some of the, some of the pilots that we're proposing to, to look at now, different ways of serving communities, so it's not all about fixed routes.
So potentially, a driver could drive in the morning a, like, we used to call it double Dutch bus, you know, the two, you know, the, yeah, like accordion type bus, and then switch to a, perhaps a van or shuttle for another part of the route, and then go back to that bus.
I, it's not, it's, we don't have that degree of flexibility, but, but for example, what we can do in the, in the proposals, we're proposing to test this demand responsive service, which, which sort of speaks to the, this idea that there will be, the bus is available when someone wants it, rather than just, rather than just running around, you know.
Yeah, seeing a bus that's empty.
Yeah, so, so the idea is that the bus sits there and is responsive to, to the demand, so you call a bus, basically. And we're going to try that service, particularly where fixed route service hasn't worked in the past, because we haven't had the ridership. So we are looking at different ways to be, to be flexible.
All right. Is there, is there a different amount for a kid, a student, than say, an adult?
A different.
A different pay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same thing for seniors as well. Do you, do you have any kind of program where the fare is, is free?
No.
No. And, and I heard in San Francisco, they're, they've implemented something where students, I thought they were, or is being proposed?
They proposed it, the board, I understand that the board made it conditional upon getting funding from MTC. MTC board didn't provide the funding, and so it's gone back to the Muni board for further discussions, I understand.
Okay. You know, I was at this meeting, Supervisor Tissier, I put it on, and she asked, she invited, I think, maybe the mayors of every city, or at least a council member of every city, and I went to, and Councilmember Richardson went to as well. You know, we looked at, you know, trying to think outside the box, you know, it's like, you know, you look at these, these proposals that you, that you guys are putting forth, and, you know, there have been proposals similar to this, you know, in the past, and, you know, instead of, you know, like, really taking a bold approach. And one of the things that we talked about in that meeting was providing free bus fare to students, and, you know, trying to create a generation that gets used to using the bus. What we have is, you know, we're, we're expecting people to use the bus, but they just, they don't have, they're not, they don't grow up with it, as, say, in, maybe in a European city, or some city in Japan, or, you know, some other country. And so if we don't, if we don't have people who are comfortable using public transportation where it isn't part of their, their daily routine, you know, it makes it very difficult for them later on in life to, to use it, especially when, when you do all the slash and burning, and it's not very efficient. So, but of course, you know, that takes money, and you're right, I mean, you know, MTC needs to, to be a solid partner with Samtrans in that regard.
So perhaps a couple of points. I understand there's a, there's a, I understand there's a degree, a large degree of emotion in the room. The slash and burn is, might be sort of unfairly characterizing what's being proposed. We have, there are five services that we're discontinuing out of our 40, 48 services.
We're talking about history, though, I mean, you look over, you know, the long term.
And Brisbane.
You're talking about Brisbane, you're not talking about other cities. Just talk about us.
So what we'll do, Aiden, is provide meaningful information as far as what we feel, I think, from, you know, transportation from a bus service coming to Brisbane, and, you know, we'll, we'll provide that for you.
Yeah, we would be, we'd be interested to talk to, to you, to your staff, to have, to have you attend our workshops and forums. This is an outreach effort. These aren't, these aren't written in stone, by any means.
Clay, we have a subcommittee, a transportation subcommittee.
In some ways, yes, because Maria was there, myself was there, we met with two of the staff from Samtrans. But pretty much the attitude is there. You don't have the ridership. We're looking at this as a business model. Maria, can you suggest what we looked at?
If, if I could, if I just wanted to be sure. Where I was going with this was that, you know, if, if we don't really, you know, maybe it might be helpful to form an ad hoc, you know, subcommittee to, to come up with, you know, work with staff and present those questions, and, and then provide that feedback to, to Samtrans.
Mr. Mayor, I think you could do one of two ways. You could form another subcommittee, or I know that through their assignments, Councilmember Conway and Councilwoman Richardson are both involved in various transportation stuff, and maybe they could act as that subcommittee.
I think that would be great. You guys up for it?
And then what we probably would do is draft a letter in response, bring that back to the full council, and let everybody take a look at it before we send it on.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Thank you, Aiden.
Aiden, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Sorry we were so rough on you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Can we take a break?
Yes, we need a break.
Okay, good. Let's take a break.
Almost 10:30.
I, I, what? We've got eight minutes.
We probably need to extend the meeting, too.
Working under pressure.
Yeah, no, but, yeah. You want to take a break? We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll get back at it.
(inaudible) service into this, into San Francisco, except for the hours.
That's right.
That's absolutely ridiculous. And, you know, I can figure some things that have smaller buses, because there's no reason to have whatever, that's why we're in this. They don't allow for transfers, so, you know, it's like you end up in the middle of nowhere with no connectivity to anything else. And, you know, we, at least we need to get a route to Arleta. I am going downtown at Seventh and Mission between 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00 a.m., when they just decided they weren't going to run a bus. So, the reason people don't use the bus service is because they're really inefficient, and they really don't know what to expect. But they're, you know, when they say they're going to Brisbane, are they, you know, just going as far as a fire station and turning around? There is, the bus that stops at Arleta is, stops at the exact same place as the 26th, or whatever the Gary bus is. So, you can get from First and Mission downtown to Arleta, but the space between Arleta and Brisbane, you know, there are no sidewalks. I mean, it's just, and we're building this, anyway, this is like, we're building a new bus stop that now is only going to be served two or three times a day, and this is like frickin' ridiculous. Anyway.
No, no, I think.
So, I think the people who are on committee should be people that have used the service.
Well, I mean, yeah, Sebby and Clark are, I guess, have had experience with transportation in regards to the committee that they're already on, so they're going to deal with it. But you know that those meetings are public, and you can come to the meeting, and it's, well, but, you know, you know, you know what? You know what? Will you listen to me, please? Okay? Here's the thing, you have a good relationship with Clark. You just email him and say, you know, "I'd like to be at that subcommittee meeting. Can you let me know when it is?" If you feel like you're not, because all the subcommittee meetings are noticed, but if you feel that you're not, ask Sherry, and she will tell you where all the subcommittees are noticed.
Some of us have jobs, and we don't have 24/7 to do work for the city. This is something that everybody in town should be able to be at a meeting at, not a little subcommittee that two or three people make decisions on.
Well, yeah, well, they don't make the, you know, see, the subcommittee meetings, they don't make decisions. Dana, then they bring it to the council.
Okay. (inaudible). 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 How long you want to extend to?
Motion to extend to 11:30.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar.
Everybody in staff goes, "Oh, God."
I want to.
Sorry.
I'd like to remove item B, please.
Item B.
I want to take off item D and F.
D, F.
Yeah, I'm making motion for approval A and C.
E.
And E.
Second.
I see D and E, right?
No, D has been taken off.
D has too?
Yes.
Okay, didn't hear that.
That's okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Ray, you're first up with?
Yeah, okay, I have just a simple request for some language additions to the minutes of July 23rd, and they're on pages four and five. And under J, at the resolution for the candlestick interchange, there is a statement made there, Councilmember Miller, and I would like to add, in addition to that first paragraph, Councilmember Miller felt that some of the statements made in the application had polished the implications with which he was not comfortable. And then, on page five, under A, new business, second paragraph, the spirit of Sacramento, which we talked about earlier, after Councilmember discussion on clarification, the term of the agreement was modified to a term of one year, and I think it would be better if it was said with a review of fees, in other words, delete and modification, because we didn't really, we may or may not do that depending upon the outcome of the review. So, I was saying, logically speaking, with a review of fees collected by the city to be conducted before renewing the agreement, and then Councilmembers plural also directed, et cetera. So, the only thing I'm really suggesting is the deletion of "and modification." Just so it's logical. So, if anybody's comfortable with those, I would move approval of the minutes of July 23rd as amended.
My second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there we go. All right, Clark?
Item D. Yeah, I took this off, you know, mainly, Ted and Susie sat here the whole night, and they want to run out the door, would probably be out the door if we approved it already, but, you know, I kind of want to give them a two cents of talking a little bit about the grant, because I think last year, we got $100,000, is that right? And just kind of a little bit about what these are for, and how you utilize them, and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Mayor, I brought Marina Administrative Assistant Susie Hamblin into the meeting tonight because she actually applied for the grant this past year, the one that's before you this evening. The grant that we got last year, quite frankly, was $100,000, and it took a while for the state literally to find our application. They actually lost it. They told me it was in General Services Office, being looked at because it was a contract over $100,000. They actually misplaced the paperwork. So, we've got basically two overriding grants at the same time. But I fully anticipate on spending the $100,000 money from the state of California from last year's grant. But what I would like to do is, any questions you have on the current grant here before us tonight, I'd like to actually have Administrative Assistant Hamblin address, if that's okay with you.
Okay, and, Susie, I don't have anything specific, but maybe just talk a little bit about what the money's going to be used for, and...
The state has money available to public marinas to help them dispose of abandoned and derelict boats that could be a hazardous waste hazard, or a sinking hazard, or they're just plain not seaworthy. So, that's what that money is used for, and that's the only thing it can be. Well, it can also be used for in-kind staff time to administer the grant, and to store the boats once we've gotten the lean paperwork from the DMV.
Okay. And how many boats a year do we kind of, is there a general amount of boats that are, go through this process?
You know, it's become more since the recession. This year, we've gotten rid of four already, and I have three more in the works that will get us up through the $100,000 grant, and we've identified probably six or seven more that are in danger of becoming abandoned, and are already derelict, but they have to be abandoned, and the owner has to stop paying their rent before we can take possession and get rid of them.
Okay, and what happens to the boats when we get rid of them?
We store them until we get the paperwork from the DMV that gives us the title, and at that time, we seek out bids from salvagers, and we usually get two to three bids, and it goes to the best bid, and then they come in either with a crane or with a towboat, and they take it away, usually to a boat ramp, where they can load it onto a truck or a trailer, and take it to a disposal facility.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's all I have. With that, I'd like to approve.
Oh, you know, I do have one question, Clark, and it was on the agreement, the date is, does it really matter if it's August 1st, or today's date? I mean, is having more time better for you, or?
The date doesn't really matter. I'm supposed to spend the money by the end of the contract date. This contract that we're currently under, they've given us a little extra time because of the fact that they had lost our paperwork. So, the date's not really that crucial.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of Resolution Number 2012-21.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item F.
Item F, which is Resolution 2012-24. Randy, I just wanted to ask you about, so, this is really kind of, and I think Dana had made the comments about it earlier, that just exactly what this is for and how it works, we're actually trading some money that, for money that will be used, that will actually be getting more, is the way I understand it, so maybe go in a little bit more detail.
This is unrelated to Ms. Stillworth's earlier comments, or?
Oh.
Her earlier comments were regarding the Transportation Authority's call for projects with the highway program. This is completely different, but, so, transportation has its own lexicon, and I tried to explain a little bit of that in the staff report, but let me try and make it simple if I can. So, the city of Brisbane and all of the other cities in the county of San Mateo are going to receive federal dollars under the federal highway bill. So, that's the Service Transportation Program. So, that's the federal dollars that we're going to receive. All right, do a little show and tell here, I didn't get to bring my puppets. The San Mateo County Transportation Authority is eligible to receive $8.6 million in the SLPP. This is Deus ex mona, this is just coming down to help us here. Now, we're going to get this, the city would get this amount of federal money regardless.
Right.
The problem with the state money, though, is it's got a timeframe, it's got to be spent by next summer, and the Transportation Authority can't do that. So, that's why they're proposing the swap, because this federal money has a longer timeframe in which it can be spent. And as I mentioned in the staff report, one of the things that we get out of it, there's a couple of things that we get out, one of them is we get a little bit more money, we get about 20% more money than we thought we were going to get by doing the swap, that's kind of the incentive to us. The other thing we get is that by getting state money instead of federal money, it's a less burdensome process we have to go through, we don't have to go through all the federal requirements, we just go through the state requirements. But really, the important thing about this, and it's why I believe that most of the agencies in the county are going to participate, is that this $8.6 million, if it isn't spent, it's lost. So, if it's not spent by the TAA, or by, through some swap, it goes away. The problem is, whatever projects the Transportation Authority is thinking this money needs to go to, don't go away. They don't get built. So, the next time money becomes available, the next $8.6 million that come in is going to go on that. So, we don't want that to happen. We want to swap these funds, we're going to get a little bit more money than we thought we were going to get, we're going to have less burden, the Transportation Authority is going to get the federal dollars that they have a little bit more time to spend money on, and so, everybody's going to get their projects built, and we're going to be able to take advantage of this bond issuance that, back from Proposition 1B.
Okay, and so, we plan on using these, we have to match these funds and stuff?
That's correct, we do, yes. Yeah, for the swapped money, there's a requirement to have local match money.
And so, is there a plan, what we're going to do, are we going to do Bay Shore Boulevard? And so is there a plan, what we're going to do, are we going to do Bay Shore Boulevard, or what are we going to do?
We're going to put out two different projects, is what we're anticipating right now, one of them is anticipated to be an overlay project, and the other one, my initial thought is that we ought to go through and repair all of the sidewalks in town, which requires a significant investment, that's upwards of $150,000 right now.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Randy.
Sure.
Good educational.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I'm honored, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2012-24.
Right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think our total amount is about $292,000. Today at CMAC, we just went through that, and I gave a packet to Clay to share with you. Look at that.
So what you're referring to, ma'am, is that would be the total project that we're required to put out to bid with this money? So, that counts our match? So the 292 isn't the total amount of money that we're getting that includes the match money?
Okay, now we're on to public hearing. Consider adoption of Resolution Number 2012-22, approving the temporary use permit UP-5-12 for use of the Baylands overflow parking for the San Francisco 49ers home games for the 2012 and 2013 seasons. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is an extension of a use that's been approved the last two seasons, it's to allow the 49ers to use a three, approximately three acre portion of the Baylands for overflow public parking for 49er games. The request is for the 2012 and 2013 seasons, expectation is, at the end of that term, they will have relocated to Santa Clara, so that use will cease to exist. Again, as I noted, it was previously approved in previous years. There's a discussion, the findings are attached, attachment aid of the staff report. Additionally, there are conditions of approval included as attachment B. Public Works Police and Fire Departments have all evaluated the facility operations over the past two seasons, and the recommended conditions of approval address their concerns. So these are the same conditions that were applied in previous years, there are no changes recommended at this point. Staff's recommending approval of the application via adoption of the attached resolution, and I'd answer any questions the council would have.
All right, any questions from the council?
I just, I have...
Sorry. I would have liked to see in the agenda report the history of the finances received from the prior year's permit, and I did make a phone call to Stuart, and if, do you have the information to sort of report on what the revenue generated from that was in the past?
They generate about $3,500 a game for the city, they do about $30,000, they do about 600 cars a game at $25 a car. So we end up with about 3,500 per game, at least we did last year. And we're hoping for 10 games this year.
No.
What? Hmm?
More.
Well, no, we want to get through, we want to get through the, we want to be higher up in the proceedings than having to play in the playoff, in that buy-in game. That's what I was thinking, we want to 10.
We got a game this Thursday.
That's true.
Thank you.
All right.
Question, just, I didn't see anywhere in the agreement, and I don't know if that's the appropriate place to put it, but, and maybe I missed it, but stating just it would be getting the 25%, I only saw that in a letter from Johnson Sharfman, the UPC, so...
Actually, again, it's written into their application, so it's part and parcel of what they're proposing as part of their application. So like any other thing, they can't modify their application without coming back to the city, so that's where it's in that provision of their letter of August 15th, 2012.
Okay, all right, very good.
All right, any questions?
It's a public hearing.
I do have a couple of questions. Let's see, Chief Messia, in the fiscal impact, it, you know, talks about, as noted under condition E, the applicant and/or operator are responsible for reimbursing the city for any additional police department expenditures associated with this use. Did we have any issues last year?
No, we did not. As you, if, a little bit of history, mayor and council members, the police department has, continues to work and has worked with the 49er organization for the past several years, years handling the traffic enforcement before the game and after the game. It's always been a wonderful and professional organization to work for. In the past, we've, with the, last year with the UPC using the parking law, we did in request some additional safety precautionaries, additional lighting, and more security on the premises for less victimization, and we actually did not have any concerns last year, it all worked out very well.
Oh, that's...
Yes.
And then on page three, it says this is not a congregation area, so tailgating is prohibited at this site?
You know, I can't, I can't respond to that, and I'm not really sure if that, they do have security there present, so I don't know if there's, I haven't been out there during the, one of the games, but I don't know if tailgating is allowed before the game, but I know after the game, they're really strict about getting everybody into their vehicles and getting the traffic moving, so that, I know that they're very strict about that, and they make sure that the property is cleaned up afterwards as well.
Okay, great. All right, if there aren't any other questions for staff, we'll have the applicant come before the council, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jonathan Sharfman, General Manager of UPC and Sunquest Properties. I just want to also recognize the police chief and the force for the good work that they've done, actually, with the Highway Patrol and the 49ers organization and City Park over the years to really address the public safety issue that happens during game days. I mean, everybody knows it really, it becomes a problem because of the choke point that happens at the Beatty exit, when they're just trying to move traffic in, and they reach a point where vehicles can't move. And so it's, it seemed to, I believe, be an improvement in public safety last year in terms of the movement of vehicles there, and as we understand it, this is, this is something that is helpful to the 49ers organization. They came to us in the first place asking for help on this issue back in 2010, as was reported in the letter to council before last year's consideration of this matter, and so we look forward to supporting it again under the conditions that have been set.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, I know that there are some folks that are sitting out there that would like to talk about this. Let's see, I don't have any, I don't have any, I mean, I saw people nodding their heads, but nothing written down, so...
Public hearing, just...
So if there's anybody that would like to speak, you know, just raise your hand. Okay, Michelle?
Just really quick, I'd like to note that there is one thing that did change. When they asked for this permit originally, it was because their lot that is right there at the freeway on-ramp was not usable because of the sewer project where they were digging it up and where they found the two boats and everything, and that lot is back in use again this season at $30 a pop. And the only other thing that I would really recommend is that, I drive by there the next morning, and this here is not as clean as it was in the past after the game, Sunday, you know, Monday morning, and there is a lot of garbage in that area right now. I don't know about this lot, but the other lot, the one that they're now using again that they didn't use for two years, there was a lot of garbage in that area, and it's right there in a sensitive habitat, so I really would request that the people who run the lots clean up right after the game, and don't let it wait till the next morning when it's all blown out into the, into the lagoon and into the bay, because it's really a mess, it's really a mess right there, right now. I know, but a lot of it blows around, and it ends up, you know your lot right where you get on the freeway? The new lot where they have the project where they dug the sewer? There's a lot of garbage there right now, a lot of garbage, so...
Thanks, Michelle. All right, and that's on the San Francisco side, and we have safeguards for us, but I'm glad that you brought it to the attention of the business owner to address that. Anyone else from the public would like to talk about this? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council discussion.
Making motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You know, one of the things, kind of like Steve, no, this isn't really revenue that we kind of were relying on, I think when we did our budget, we knew they may be coming forward, but this might be something that we want to utilize for our bus service that we've been subsidizing, you know?
No, we do not budget for this because we, it was not approved by council at the time of the budget, so we don't budget for this revenue.
And maybe just have staff come back with a recommendation, because I mean, I know it's just only $30,000, but you know, still something to kind of look at, and we weren't really counting on this, so...
I think we need to pursue our avenues with Samtrans, with Caltrans, with TA, to provide transportation for our kids.
Well, I agree, but we're kind of locked into a bus service right now, so...
I think we need to get out of that and push the Samtrans to do their job.
All right, no, I think that's something that we should explore, Clark. All right, so moving on to new business. Review and, review and comments presented by the Planning and Parks and Recreation Commissions and Open Space and Ecology Committee, and provide direction to the City Sustainability Committee. So, yeah, we have our sustainability plan, that we had our two commissions and committee review, and they've provided comments on that plan. Clay, you have any feedback you'd like to provide?
Stuart will give the staff report on that.
Okay, sure.
So this is the sustainability plan that the committee, made up of members of the city council, the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, the Open Space and Ecology Committee, had worked on for probably about six months. They went through a number of different metric types of systems to determine which one they thought would best fit for the city of Brisbane. They looked at, and they chose the One Planet Living method, which has 10 general areas. Within those 10 general areas, they then provide a context for it, they provide a summary approach. Those are the aspects of the plan that this, the Sustainability Committee have provided for the commissions, committees, and the public to review. There are other steps in this plan. After you get all the comments from the public on this, the next step is to go back, look at those comments, see if there needs to be changes to the summary approach, if there needs to be changes for the summary approach, the Sustainability Committee would work on that, and then from there, you start developing the metrics on how you measure whether or not you're meeting what your, what your goals are for the plan. And then after you develop the measures, you, the next step is developing the action plan itself. The question that has come up most at the meetings of Open Space, Planning Commission, and Parks and Recreation, is how does this fit into the project for the Baylands? This was a conversation that the Sustainability Committee had over a period of time, and aspects of the sustainability plan may be used for mitigation of some of the issues that are, that's raised through the EIR process. And there may be other aspects of this plan, because the plan is much more aspirational than what you would find in a normal, normal SEQA process. So some aspects of the plan may be part of a future DDA that the council and a developer may agree, would agree to in the future. And therefore, the idea of the plan right now is to look at it as what is the aspiration for the city of Brisbane when it comes to the sustainability of the Baylands? One of the questions that the commissions and the committees talked about was, it's hard to really get a grasp on this plan until the metrics and the action plan are developed. The ideas behind the aspirations are very good, but they may be hard to measure. And I think this is exactly what the Sustainability Committee was also struggling with. The Sustainability Committee has worked with a consultant, Jeff Cyfers, who has worked on other plans which have been approved by One Planet Living, and maybe I'll take a moment just to say why One Planet Living structure was chosen by the Sustainability Committee. It was chosen because it has an outside agency as a third-party verifier for whether or not the project is meeting the goals. And it has an international reputation for projects that have been done in the United States, have been already done and accomplished in the United Kingdom. In fact, when we were doing the Brisbane University discussions about the Baylands, a member from One Planet Living came and talked about the Bedzed community in England. They are also looking at other communities and other projects throughout the United States and throughout the world. The Olympics was part of this process, that they, their sustainability plan was a One Planet Living plan, so it's got an international reputation, it's got outside third-party verifiers, so those were the things that the Sustainability Committee were looking at when they were developing it. The Sustainability Committee also had discussions about when to bring in the landowner in this process. The consultant has never worked on a process where the landowner was not involved from the very beginning, but the Sustainability Committee said, we don't want the landowner to be part of these conversations from the very beginning, because we want to make sure that whatever plan we have for ourselves is truly a Brisbane aspirational plan. It's what does Brisbane want to have when it comes to sustainability for the Baylands? And then as we start going through the metrics, as we start going through the action plan, that's when the conversation may begin with the developer. And this is a conversation, I think, that the Sustainability Committee will carry on in their next conversations. You have included the comments from the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee. If you notice, the Planning Commission just had some very general comments for it, the Parks and Recreation Commission had a few more detailed comments, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee took a three and a half hour conversation about this plan and really delved into a lot of the details. My recommendation from a staff perspective is, maybe instead of going through all those documents tonight in detail, maybe allow the Sustainability Committee to review those documents, take the public input tonight, and really try and scope out what that summary approach and what the aspirations of this community are, and then from there, take the next step and start looking at how do we start measuring those summary approaches? And what the Sustainability Committee has talked about is, as those metrics start getting developed, and as they're developed, is we would go through this process again, where we would bring it back to the city council, the city council would send it back out to their committees and commissions to look at the metrics, to see if they make sense, and be very iterative, and have a lot of public input in this process. So that's the recommendation tonight, is to take public comment, take any comments from the council as far as it relates to the document as written so far, and then send it back to the Sustainability, and let them do what I think they've done a very good job to at this point in the six to 12 months that they spent working on it. And I think they're all very eager to get back to it, because I think the last time we met may have been February, March?
June.
June. Well, we met in June to talk about process, but I think the last time they really worked on the document was prior to April.
Several months before.
Yes. So that's my... And the council members who are on the committee are Mayor Lenson, Mayor Pro Tem Miller. So if there's anything I missed, please add it.
I was just going to comment, that was an extremely thorough staff report and it appears you just did it all off the top of your head and...
That's what he's good at.
Yeah. Quite impressed.
It's that head.
No, it was extremely thorough. Yeah, I mean, if there's anything I would add to that.
Yeah.
But we do have this document.
Could I just comment? Yeah. I just want to... He asked if we would like to add to the staff report. And the one thing that I would say is that what you have just articulated as a proposal is... Makes total sense to me, but it isn't exactly what's in the written staff report. And so what you are proposing makes full sense to me. And I just wanted to mention, we want to hear what people have to say, but I think that rather than us as a full council, you know, discussing all the comments and so forth, you know, send it back to the Sustainability Committee and let them absorb all the comments and then come back to the council with a sort of revised document.
My recommendation may have been different at nine this evening.
Yeah, that's what you just said.
Right. That's what I'm understanding what you're saying, right?
Right.
Okay. And so I'm just sort of reiterating that as, to me, it's efficient and it also basically turns it over to Sustainability Committee to look into what all the groups have said to absorb. And we've got some additional comments and, you know, let's take that all into account and then come back to the council with a revised proposal.
Unless, of course, council members do have some things that they really want to address that came out of these comments.
This suggestion, you...
I've got one comment and one question, if I could.
Absolutely.
You know, because I did read through it and made initial comments before it actually went through everybody. The only one I had was for when you guys go through this and incorporate the comments is to take the comments that are specifically addressed as the Open Space and Ecology or OSEC thinks or whatever, you know, I mean, just incorporate it all, you know, it's separated out, that it's not Planning Commission or PBNR.
Integrated.
Right. It's all integrated. And the only question I have is on under zero waste. And it talks about Brisbane's solid waste is collected by South San Francisco scavengers, blah, blah, blah.
What page?
Brisbane. It doesn't have a page. Just says zero waste.
What, chapter seven, two, one?
It's chapter two.
It could be page 11.
Page 11 of the document.
Yeah, page 11 of the original document.
Under the context where it says Brisbane's solid waste is collected, yes.
Yeah. Well, the question I have is, is our agreement with South San Francisco scavengers expire 2013 or 2014? I thought it was 2014.
Yeah, it's 2014. We have to give notice on our intent either to renew or not by, I believe, the end of June of 2013.
Okay. Because it says we expire in 2013.
We will make that change.
Okay. That's all. And with that, that's it. I'll shut up. Really?
All right. Okay. Well, let's open it up to anyone in the public. I know Dana wrote that letter, so come on up, please.
Well, I'll give you the Cliff Notes version of this. I am submitting some other documents that are like the California Energy Commission's recent information about climate change, two articles about Treasure Island, two articles about the Chevron air quality, not just kind of being missed during the recent fire. Some of the issues about biomass. There is a Ramsar evaluation of wetlands, of how to quantify wetlands because you talk about economics, but really don't, in my opinion, give wetlands the say that it should. And also because you included health, I wanted to talk about genetically modified organisms. So my initial comment is wondering why these are goals just for the Baylands and not citywide policy for all businesses and all residents alike. I think that there should be a focus that while we've set it, it should show up as a goal that all uses that require vehicles should be on the northern end where the transit is located and that there should be a real quantifying of how they would reduce traffic trips. Some of the comments about using the shuttle still overlooks the fact that the shuttle or using any shuttle, the current shuttle is gas-driven or fossil fuel. There are places where I've mentioned that, you know, the language of using stating that off-site local renewable energy seems to be contradictory to the stated goals. I'm concerned about promoting biomass for reasons that it is a very complex waste stream and biomass has different processes and you really need to kind of determine, is it going to be the ingestion where it's creating methane or are we going to be grinding wood out there? Will the wood have toxic substances in it and how much of that will be released into the atmosphere? I referred to the Chevron and refinery and the PG&E blast about having corporations that might make decisions about, you know, things not being necessary to be done when it's in the public's interest to have some kind of oversight of that. I'm concerned that with doing the biomass that we could end up having stockpiling of objects out there, which would be a problem. I would like that if our goal is to create, deal with the carbon that is in the atmosphere, that we would really have a goal or a policy that, you know, required heavy use of plants, both interior and exterior of buildings. I have some commentary about your sustainable transportation goals. Don't need to repeat them because hopefully you'll think of just even some of the language where whenever possible or if it becomes practical, that kind of really undoes the whole process of having a goal. I mean, it should be attained, you know? I don't start... The goal to become a teacher, if I could, you know, stay awake to do my work, I made a point of doing the work that was required. About local and sustainable food production, I'm bringing up that actually there's a discussion about discontinuing the use of, I think it's Tamalas Bay or Bodega Bay for oyster farming. So there really could be somebody out there that has a resource that might want to do oyster farming. I don't know if we have the flow of nutrients in our water to be able to support it, but there really are some potential sustainable practices that we could jump right into that are people are involved with right now, that would love to know that they could go someplace else and use their sustainable practices. I have... One of the sustainable water goals should include the containment and capture like the state Energy Commission states is that a lot of times the issue with water is the fact that we get a lot of rain, but we don't contain it. And that goes back to the discussion of cisterns or even above-ground reservoirs. At least we had reservoirs where I grew up. And that we really need a comprehensive watershed plan. Again, I mentioned about the quantification of wetlands, that it's really necessary to consider that a really valuable resource for many reasons that...
You put that in this document, right?
Yeah. I'm just skipping, like I said.
Everything you have said is rare. It's almost six minutes and we have agenda items to continue.
Thank you. And regarding public health, the last part was about GMOs and that they're discovering that genetically modified organisms might be changing the flora and fauna in our guts because genetic modification goes down to the viral or bacterial level. And so we really need to be considerate of the whole idea of wastewater treatment. It has to kill flora and fauna. Otherwise, we have these genetically modified organisms that are getting loose and rampant into our environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. And, you know, when we go back to the committee to...
We'll read it carefully.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm prepared to make a motion if you're...
Is...
Unless there's anybody else that wants to speak? Barbara does.
I thought you were just stretching, Barbara.
As a member of the Open Space and Ecology Committee, I responded to the document, but I also wanted to get up here as a citizen and say that I think we need to push even harder. I think that this project, you know, it's never going to be food neutral. You just can't grow that much food out there, so it should be energy positive. You know, that sustainability comes through a lot of aspects, but I just don't feel like we're reaching far enough, you know? And if we don't make those goals for practical reasons, we decide to compromise. But I think as an aspirational document, this needs to take three or four more jumps I was just reading today about some poor little baby, four-year-old child who's been diagnosed with leukemia in our community. And I looked up what causes leukemia. I thought, God, four-year-old baby is getting sick. And one of the causes was genetic predisposition, but the other nine causes were all human-made factors. You know, so I don't know what it was particularly in this child's case, but we have to understand that what we're doing to our environment is really, I mean, that kid is in our environment. We're responsible for that. Odds are, we're responsible for that. And I just feel like we need to push this so much more farther or all of our kids and our grandkids, this is going to be happening to them and I can't bear that. I don't want that on my conscience and I can't do it alone. No one person can solve this problem. We all need to work together and just make those leaps. And I just wanted to ask the council to make those leaps. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Michelle?
I also went through the document really thoroughly as part of the Open Space and Ecology Committee, but as a private citizen in Brisbane. And about, you know, way into the meeting and after reviewing the nitty-gritty and everything, I thought, wow, you know, really, overall, this isn't very sustainable. And one of the things that, even though the document was very aspirational, it treated the Baylands like it was an island and not part of an interconnected community of the Bay Area and of California. And so while the first reading, I was like, wow, this is great. But then as I really thought about it more and more, I thought, like Barbara did, we have a long ways to go to make this sustainable. And part of it is, you know, water and sewer and air and energy and interconnectivity. And this isn't an island. This is not our little Baylands island. This is part of a larger connected infrastructure. And until we start looking at it that way and how it interconnects with everything else that's going on and until we resolve the issues of the toxicity of the area, well, we have a lot of work to do. And so while this was, you know, a great starting point and a really thought-provoking document, I think we have a really, really long ways to go to make this truly a sustainable development. And I think we need to. I think we really need to. So thank you for your hard work on this. This is a good starting place. Don't think of this as being the finish.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. You know, when you made those comments right now, I remember reading those comments. There was pretty much the exact same wordage in there. And yeah, you know, I really appreciate the work that Open Space and Ecology had committed to this document. I see Kevin over there and the great work that Park and Rec put into it. And even though the comments were not that extensive for the Planning Commission, I know that they had spent quite a bit of time on it as well and, you know, play more opportunities to bite at that apple. So, you know, everything that you've presented, Dana, this document, you know, feedback we've gotten from Jonathan, you know, it all plays into it because it's a living document. And I think our goals, our final goal in the end is all the same, to make it the most sustainable.
Is there a written response from UPC to this document?
No, just some... I think just some verbal feedback, but I think...
You haven't written anything?
If I could finish what I was saying, though, that's...
But you were saying, you know, things from Jonathan's part. I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, well, we've had some verbal comments, but you're right, there hasn't been that yet. But, you know, I think in the end, you know, we all want to create something very special out of the Baylands and have it be the most sustainable development in the world. So hopefully we'll all get there together. Okay. So Jonathan, did you want to say anything before Ray makes a motion? Are you good? Yeah, just briefly, yeah, sure.
Jonathan Sharfman with UPC. I just want to acknowledge the extraordinary effort and work that's gone into this so far and acknowledge how difficult a task it is, given the very high and very noble aspirations of the community with regards to sustainability and how they differ from kind of the current norm of defining what that is. And so what we're looking forward to is the subsequent phases of this process where the measurable goals and the plans for goal implementation and for monitoring are worked through because that's where guys like me get to figure out just how far we can possibly go in helping to meet those goals or in hoping to meet those goals and also meet the realities of the marketplace and what it requires, just in terms of the costs associated with remediation, infrastructure, and provision of the public benefits that a project of this magnitude at any approved scale would require. So we really do look forward to continued discussion and appreciate the effort, the ongoing effort that's going into this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. All right. So Ray?
Okay. So I was basically going to move what Stuart Silinger proposed, and that is that the council send to the Sustainability Committee the comments from the three advisory bodies, with thanks, for them to review and incorporate as appropriate into a revised document, which would then... document, which would then come back to the council. And that, in addition, the Sustainability Committee would then begin to work on the subsequent steps that Stuart mentioned. Particularly the measuring devices and the achievable indicators that will either be built into the EIR process or the development agreement itself. Stuart, did I get it?
That's what I would suggest, yes.
Okay.
That's what I heard. Second?
All right.
I have one question. While this—at this point, when it's going back to the Sustainability Committee, are we still accepting comments or consideration from the Open Space and Ecology, Parks and Rec, and—
Absolutely.
—to be incorporated as it goes?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, and we may want to, you know, really kind of even think about when it comes back to the councils, maybe have them go for a second review, you know what I mean? Just to kind of run it through on how it looks in its present form, maybe get additional comments, you know?
Yeah, you know, like Ray was mentioning, you know, we have those ways of, you know, measuring, you know, we have these key indicators. And so we add that to the plan, then it goes—you know, the idea was to have it go back to those bodies.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And have them, you know, bring their ideas and comments, and then see how their comments were incorporated into the document.
Right.
And now that, you know, UPC will also be part of the equation too, and we'll be taking their comments as well, because, you know, now we all need to kind of be working together to have that ultimate goal of creating a sustainable development.
Can I also ask, is it possible for us to continue having the information, as council, to read them, read it on our own?
Sure.
I think I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
To be coming along as the committee goes along, for us to have the information prepared.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so—
So who seconded?
Do we need to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I made a motion.
You did.
I seconded.
Clark seconded.
All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know we needed to make a motion on that, but—
It's always better. Then it's clear.
Okay, staff reports, city manager report on upcoming activities.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief given the hour. Your next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 12th, and that will be the first in a series of items dealing with various budget issues that the council identified during the budget process that they wanted to do more in-depth study of. At that particular meeting, we will have a discussion of the Marina operations, capital needs, and financial issues. Your next regular city council meeting will be on September 17th, which is a Monday, and then we will follow a schedule basically for the month of October and into November of a regular council meeting on the first and third Mondays, and then alternating weeks we'll have various workshop items on the budget issues.
All right. All right, subcommittee reports.
I don't think—I didn't go to the CCG meeting. Seppi went in place of me. I don't know if you have anything to report?
I did. It was pretty much a lot of routine contract renewals, but there was conversation about one Bay Area government, that initiative that MTC and ABAG is working on, and there were concerns about it, that the cities should really be cautious about signing any of the resolution to make sure that it's in line with our general plan, to just be very cautious about that. The other thing is Rich Napier announced that he's retiring as of October, after all these years.
Yeah. Wow, interesting.
That was a big—
Any reason why?
Yes, he's pretty set.
Because Hal's retiring, too.
Yeah, I think—I'm sure they're in communication. No, he's done a great service, both of them. We appreciate that, and the attendance was not really that high. But, oh bag, oh bag. Nothing per se out of the ordinary.
All right. Our little meeting—
I attended the Airport Land Use Committee meeting, and they are very close to adopting
Their plan.
—raft, EIR, and negative deck for the airport land use. I will—they—I believe they're gonna have one more review next month, and then send it to the CCG for adoption. I'm not going to be available for the next month's meeting. Most of the land use and documentation that go with it affect Burlingame, South City areas more than Brisbane. One thing that's going into effect is a county-wide noise disclosure notice on any real estate sales. And Brisbane pushed to get it not just Brisbane and some of the other affected, but that it should be county-wide if it's going to be in effect, so it wouldn't be specific to the North County.
I think that was an assembly bill from— It's been a while back, wasn't it?
Well, but they expanded their sphere of influence, and so it affected us differently. But if anyone's interested in reviewing the documents, I have—it's a precursor to looking at our EIR, and the appendix is larger than the document itself, even with all its beautiful fold-out color 3D maps. And so I believe—is it Seppi or Clark who's my alternate on the airport land use?
I'm not—I'm not the one.
Then it's Clark.
No, actually, it's me.
It's you?
Oh, is it you?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Because you have the document. You have that big old thick thing, too.
Uh-huh.
Well, we've got new ones. We've gotten like four of them.
I know. They just keep coming.
They just keep coming. So I'll let you know the date of the next meeting, and if you feel so inclined to be present, I would appreciate you covering me for that one.
Did you want to talk about our Fairpoint subcommittee meeting that we had? It's been such a long time.
It has been a long time. I really don't have much to add about the subcommittee meeting. We talked about the thoughts of how it could be laid out and got some of the recommendations from the other committees. And then we asked a new local resident to take a look at the plan, and I have not heard back from—
Louise?
Louise, yes. Dunlap. Oh, Schiller. Sorry. The other Louise.
Yeah, you might not for a while because she has family illness issues.
Oh, I didn't know that, so.
All right. Ray, do you have any—
I could quickly say one thing about the Facilities Committee, and that is a proposal was brought to our attention about the potential for solar through a leasing process and different varieties of ways of doing that. And we were asked whether we were interested in that being pursued, and coming back to us with a variety of suggestions, and we said yes.
All right, sounds good. All right.
Can I—it's—a there were not too many committee meetings, but I met with Warren Slocum. He's a candidate for Board of Supervisors, and most likely the person to win, most likely, no doubt. And I think we need to reach out, really make sure he understands our issues, our needs, particularly when we're talking about high-speed rail, all these issues. He's new, and I'd rather have him know our needs, our understanding of issues. So that's why I met with him.
Of course, he's not really new to the county bureaucracy.
He's not, and that's the thing that—but that's what my concern is. County bureaucracy really concentrates their understanding based on the needs of the South County. I want him to really understand what we're planning at the Baylands, what's going to be impact of San Francisco development, what's the transportation. Nobody talks about it. I asked a TA to have this presentation made about what's happening on behalf of San Francisco with that development and so forth. There was a hesitation about having that kind of a workshop. They keep saying, well, there are—things are changing and so forth, but people need to know what's going to happen to North County. So I'd like to ask you guys to definitely make efforts to get to know him and let him know our needs.
Definitely. Let's see, I wanted to share with you a little road trip that Stuart and I had last week.
It's a cute way of putting it.
Yeah. As you read in Stuart's email, the legislature wanted to—actually, the Speaker of the House wanted to gut a particular bill, 658, and put in language that would basically nullify the court decision that we want against the State Board of Equalization to have the sales tax money be identified as local sales tax, which results in quite a bit of money for us, you know, about $9 million.
Walmart.com.
Yeah, and so Stuart called me around four o'clock and told me the situation, and so I—you know, Stuart was kind enough to give me the phone numbers, you know, really quick of our Senator, Senator Yee, Assemblyman Hill, and then also the Speaker of the House, Charles Calderon's phone number. And so Yee and Hill, they didn't know anything about AB658. So I told them about it, said, okay, we'll research it, and we'll get back to you. And so, you know, we had—
They didn't support us.
So then, you know, through the evening, I'm talking with Clay, I'm talking with Stuart, so, you know, we gotta go to Sacramento. And so Stuart came by around seven o'clock, and we drove up to Sacramento, and first thing we did was we went to Senator Yee's office, and he says, you know, even though this bill is beneficial to my city, I'm gonna—I'm gonna vote no, because it's the right thing to do, because that money belongs to us. We had—with Walmart.com, their sole operation was in Brisbane. They had over 1,000 employees. It just made sense that that sales tax money should come to us. And he said, you know, we also have the chair of this subcommittee, or this committee that he's on, and the bill was going to be reviewed by this Senate committee, which is the Governance and Finance Committee, and there's nine members on this committee. So at first, we thought they were gonna look at the bill at around 10:00 in the morning, and it turned out, no, we're gonna change it, and it's gonna be 5:00 in the evening. And so we're up there, and then so we thought, okay, well, we're not gonna just sit around, we're gonna be lobbyists, lobbyists for a day. And so we got a list of every senator that was on that committee, and then we walked to every office. And we met with quite a few senators and staff people if the senators were at session. And we pleaded our case, and we said, you know, local sales tax money needs to stay local. And they said, yep, we agree with you. And so then around 11:00, we find out that the meeting had changed. It wasn't 5:00 anymore, it's gonna be at noon. And so—
Sounds like Sacramento.
So we go to this chamber, and it was quite fascinating the way that they operate. There's nine of these senators up there, and so, you know, it felt good to have the chair be on our side. And so she was the only one who made a single comment. All the other senators were silent on the matter. And so she—you know, her thing was that, you know, this is a very complicated matter, and we can't be deciding on this, you know, in such a quick fashion. And then she had Calderon come up. And so here we have Calderon, a very powerful person in the legislature, and he's being backed by the State Board of Equalization, and then on his left side is a representative from HDL, and they represent cities in legal matters. And we had Muni Services representing us. And so he pleaded his case why this was—why it should pass, because that money had already been allocated to these county pools. And so a lot of cities had already received this money, and so they would have to give this money back. And so he pleads his case, and then the chair asked for other folks who are in support to, you know, provide comment. They provide comment, then she asks, okay, who would like to provide comment against this? And so, you know, so I went up there and, you know, represented Brisbane, and it was really cool to do it. And but, you know, we also had—we had California cities there supporting us. We had Muni Services supporting us, of course. And so then Calderon had one more time to, you know, provide a final comment. So then he gives his comment, and then the chair says, okay, I'll take a motion. And there was dead silence. She goes, okay, we're done. And that was it, right? And so what had happened was that this matter had died in committee. Now, I mean, I don't know, you know, how much influence, you know, Stuart and I had talking to these senators, but I—you know, it was—you know, it was kind of cool to, you know, to have that type of outcome. And you go up there, and you think you're battling against Goliath, and you come out, you know, ahead at the end of the day. Now, it doesn't mean that we're home free, but, you know, it shows that, hey, the little guy can win, and if you have a good argument, and you do your homework and your due diligence, then, you know, you can make it. So, yeah, so I just wanted to share—
Because we've been working on this since 2005. I remember when I went up there as mayor, exactly on this issue. So this process has been going on. So far, we've been very blessed.
Just for those who are watching television and are hanging in with us, just to get the facts out on the table, the court decision was actually—goes back to 2009, February of 2009, when the lawsuit was filed, and that's—the value of that's about $5.5 million.
Oh, okay.
The Board of Equalization is going to appeal that decision. We will also be appealing, and our appeal will be that the retroactivity should go back to the time that we originally filed the claim, which was in 2001, which is the $9 million.
That's for the $9 million, okay, yeah.
And regardless of which one were to—either way, we have about $1 million in attorney fees. Now, if we lose on appeal, then we don't have to pay the—it's all in the contingency of winning.
Well, I'm sure Ray, you probably—as mayor, you're going to be involved in this too.
You're gonna have to get up at 7:00 in the morning?
Oh, yeah, we've done—
We left at 7:00.
I have been—
Oh, left, so you got up at 6:00, huh?
5:30. All right, so communications, I think, were probably good. Or you have something that—
Motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Oh, that's right, you know, we need to talk about this, sorry.
Well, we're good, but—
Yeah.
This item was suggested be put on the agenda for the council members to discuss any items that have come to their—you know, any written communications or verbal communications that they want to share with the rest of the council, or if they want to direct staff to direct staff to come back and be able to respond to. So that was the purpose of this item.
Yeah, a couple of quick things, and I don't want to take too much time, because we may want to discuss it further. But I had two things that came to my attention, and I felt we need to do a better job of bringing things out to the public. The first thing that came to my attention was this very interesting exchange between former Mayor Clara Johnson and former Mayor Clark Conway, which went on, was very substantive, very solid, very interesting. But only one part of it actually went out anywhere in the public, and that was on BrizNet. And, you know, Clark's part was not anywhere publicly, to my knowledge. So it would seem to me that if there's that kind of exchange, and Clark wanted to have it put into the public process, then we should have an item on the agenda in which that can happen. That's just, that's a thought I had, because it would seem too bad to me that, you know, one side was there, and the other side is just, you know, missing in action, so to speak. So this would be an opportunity to do that. It also responds to Dana's concern about regularly, you know, making sure that communications that are brought to us are noted, and that become a part of the public record. I think that is important. And the third thing that I talked with Hal about, which is a complication, and that is, for the last couple of weeks now, there's been a fantastic discussion on BrizNet, on sustainability in the Baylands. And a lot of really solid, good information, positions, arguments, back and forth. And I asked Hal, is it appropriate for council members to get involved in this? And he said, well, you know, BrizNet is a private forum. And if we were to get involved there, and especially if three of us ended up getting involved there, we'd be breaking the Brown Act. It would be illegal. And so then I think, you know, that's kind of too bad in a way. How can we, and this is just a question, really, how can we incorporate that, you know, that wonderful discussion that's going on there in a way that engages the council as well? And what would be the appropriate way to do that? And I don't know the answer to that question. But it does strike me as it's kind of too bad. There's this wonderful conversation going on, which, basically, because of the legal restrictions, we are essentially not allowed to participate in.
And maybe we could discuss those wonderful things, because we read them for those who are in part of BrizNet.
Right.
Maybe under this communication.
That's one way, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you could print it out and bring it and say, hey, there's this thing that was on BrizNet. And, you know, I like to have a council discussion on it. Or bring it back to another meeting so that then we can read it.
Right.
And
So what do you think, Hal? Is there a way that we could bring this into our conversation?
I don't have a problem if you want to replicate or print out, you know, the discussion on BrizNet, include it in the packet, and then have council discussion on it. The problem I had is if you've got three council members all participating in the BrizNet dialogue, you've got yourself a meeting.
Uh-huh.
And that's the problem. But
Right.
What we had talked about is maybe bringing those comments back to a meeting and maybe having an agenda item. And I think the title Communications was intended to maybe serve that purpose, so that if you had something in BrizNet, or some other source for that matter, that you wanted to bring before the entire council, there'd be at least a place mark on the agenda to do that. It doesn't mean you have to notice what the particular subject is.
Right.
It would almost be like oral communications or council member subcommittee reports. You don't have a particular subject, but at least you have an opportunity to raise a matter. No action would be taken.
Right.
At most, you could direct staff to come back or agendize it for a later meeting if you wanted to
Right.
Take a specific action.
Right.
And I know a few years back, there were some people that they really didn't want, per se, the council to get involved in this.
Right.
They wanted just people to be able to, they even told me that, you guys have the avenue to talk, and that's public meeting. We'd like to be able to do this without council meddling in what we're saying and what we want to do. So there was that fine line from some
Yeah, there's that, and there's
Kind of mixed bag.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, there's other folks that, like, when we campaigned, people saying, hey, how come you're not on BrizNet?
Right, exactly. So the other side of it is, how come you're not participating?
Yeah.
Well, you feel like you're lurking. You know, it's, you're watching, and you may be taking in the information, but you really can't react on that forum, for the most part.
Right, I agree.
Because of the, you know, especially on BrizNet, where it doesn't get posted for several hours or several days, where all five of us could comment on something that would all appear
And we wouldn't even know about it.
And we wouldn't know about it. There's no thread. There's no continuity.
I think we even talked about the moderator of BrizNet putting some kind of a notice up that says council members really cannot participate in this discussion, because it would potentially constitute a violation of the Brown Act.
Yeah. We have to be cautious.
But, yeah, it's
But when you mentioned there were a lot of good information that was shared, open space is a very good area for them to know about all of that. Sustainability Committee needs to know all of that. Will you read them?
Sure.
Again, it's a source of information that is, it may not be where somebody wants their comments publicized or put into the record.
Right.
And so it should be, I would urge that we try to convey to people who are on BrizNet that we see posting there, that if it's something they want shared to the City Council, to invite them to
Send it to
To send it to the City Council through the normal channels, so that it does get put in the record. And we do know what their ideas are, what their visions are.
Well said.
Yeah, I guess, Ray, in reference to, you know, a dialogue between Clara and I, I'm just kind of wondering, in what form would that take? It just, like, printed document that goes somewhere, or what?
Well, I mean, it's up both to, you know, Clara and you, as to how you would like to do that. But in that case, I think it would have been, from my point of view, fine to have that as an item underneath Communications between former Mayor Johnson and Conway, and have it, you know, listed here on the agenda and a part of the public record. And then if we wanted to talk about it, we could. We wouldn't have to. It would just be there. But then people would see the whole conversation, the whole dialogue, rather than just one part of it.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you said, it's really up to
Oh, sure.
Individuals. I mean, if Clark wanted to share it with
Yeah, it's up to him.
Everyone, he would have printed it out and
Right.
Gave it to Clay and said, okay, I want this
Well, usually, if it's a public document, wouldn't you do it as an open letter, if you wanted it shared?
Yeah.
Well, actually, I copied all the council on my comment.
Yeah.
Right.
And I copied the City Manager, too, in regards.
But would Clara's letter be considered?
Her initial thing, she sent to the City Council
Right. In her case, it would be.
Send it to BrizNet.
Right.
And then I responded.
Okay.
But not for the council. And I
Right.
Put that in my disclaimer.
Right.
If you read it, so. It's kind of long.
I think
Yeah. All right. So how about this? I know we're working on time. I'm trying to get out here by midnight.
We have another meeting.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Item C, discuss City Attorney recruitment process. Clay?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Topples seems to think that he needs to move on to another phase in his life. So I don't know why, but he does.
Only seven points.
Anyway, what we put in the staff report was what you did, what the council at that time, and actually, I think one of your members was a participant in that, did when you recruited a city attorney back in the early '90s. And that was to develop a council subcommittee, and then develop a request for proposal process, and then establish an interview process for the full council to interview the potential candidates. So that's the way you handled it 20 years ago. You got a great city attorney out of it.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good way to do it, just like we
Sometimes things work, you know.
That consultant to educate the committee on CEQA. So is there any council members that would like to be on that subcommittee? We got one, we got two. Anybody else?
Unless somebody else really need, badly wants to be, I would be more than happy.
I think, I know Ray did a fabulous job getting our trainer, so.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion for selecting Ray and Seppi.
So moved.
Good morning.
Second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Let's see. Update on Westmore School Bus issue.
Maria.
I almost want to say good morning, but good evening, council members.
Not there yet. Seven more minutes.
Just to let you know, really quickly, staff and Councilmember Richardson met with Sam Trans representatives last week to discuss the issue on possibly getting some service for our high school students that are attending Westmore from here over to the Westmore School. There is currently a bus that takes students over to Jefferson High School, the 24, which has service in the morning and afternoon. The scheduler is taking a look to see if it's possible to do a timed transfer, possibly, for the Westmore students, where they would take the same bus, transfer to another line that would take them up to the Westmore. The way it looks right now is that it's a little bit tight on the schedule. It would drop them off approximately three to four minutes right before the bell for starting. So they're gonna take a look at some other options for it. One of the things that they did discuss is that any options that they do consider would probably not be implemented until next school year. So they did want to make sure that we were aware of that, that there is a process to getting it implemented. But they are working with us to try and see what they can do at this point.
All right. Thanks, Maria.
You're welcome.
You know, Clark, you and I, we talked, and last time I came up, about having a school subcommittee meeting. And, you know, I was on vacation, and let's coordinate you and I, trying to
With Jefferson Union High School.
Yeah, and we were supposed to have that meeting, and then
It got canceled.
Yeah, there was an issue that came up with the principal at turnover.
Resigning.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's see if we can get together soon and agendize that for our next meeting. All right. So, let's see, League Resolutions. So I went through this thing. You know, most of them I said yes to, but there were some that, there was one I said no, and there was another one that I had kind of a question about. So did anybody, like, read through it and have any issues with any of the resolutions?
I do. I wanted to make sure our council votes on this particular item that is very, very important.
Which one is that?
And that has to do with item... Okay, the first two that you see, number three and four.
Right.
These are both from Needles, City of Needles. What's happening, a lot of trucking companies, big businesses that they have big warehouse, have gone along in that area. And of course, there's going to be greenhouse gas issue, a lot of fuel and so forth. So they don't want to be penalized for that. So now they're coming up, and they're saying that we need to suspend implementation of AB 32 and CB 375.
Which is utterly ludicrous.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, right.
And they pulled the fast one in one of the policy committee meetings, that certain people, there were more people in attendance in that meeting than known people, and this resolution went by just like that. So there are a lot of us are very, very concerned about this. We need to make sure to oppose anything
Right.
That is going to suspend it.
Right.
But the resolution is asking for, yeah, suspension of this AB 32 and so forth and so on. So I think we need to be very cautious.
Just to note that those two items, the global warming with AB 32, and then the Desert Protection Act, have actually not gone to the Environmental Quality Subcommittee yet.
Yeah, if you can believe it. Because these are blatantly anti-environment resolutions.
This is what I'm
Absolutely blatant.
This is what I'm seeing.
So the, and I'm part of that committee.
Uh-huh.
And so it's supposed to go in the September 5th, which is
Right, right before, yeah.
I suspect, the way that committee is constructed, it's about two-thirds coastal urban between Los Angeles area and Northern California area. So I doubt that these resolutions will get a recommendation out of the Environmental Quality Committee. They still may go on to the convention floor for a vote, but
This is going to the convention.
Yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that, and it doesn't matter who is the, our voting delegate, must vote the way our council is making the decision, to not support the suspension of AB 32 on this
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
On these two.
Right.
It's very, very important for us to stay strong on this.
Right.
Okay. So first two are a no. What about the other ones?
And the fines and forfeiture, I have it as no. We should not support, because that takes the local control, unless, unless our chief has something else. Or Clay, you know, do you have anything else? Because this takes the local control away from what kind of a fines you want to assess and how you want to, it's really important for us to read that.
You know, when I read this, to me, it seems like we're getting a raw deal on being properly compensated for tickets that we issue. And that we need to actually make sure that we get more money, that we get a greater share of the proceeds from that. So I would vote yes, not no.
No, not to, the way, look at what the, what League of Cities is saying. And we go back to number two.
I'm not sure which one this is.
Number two.
Maybe we should get a, from the attorney.
I think we need to get on page, I'm trying to get that.
Page 14?
I don't know what one. It's fines and forfeiture. I don't know whether our chief
It's page 14.
If our chief or Clay knows anything on this.
Yeah, other than, again, this is going to a policy committee at the last minute. It's got two policy committees that it hasn't yet gone through.
Okay. So we need to make sure, Clay, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Clay?
We are there at that meeting to really listen to both sides. But at the same time, I wanted to make sure we have the feedback from our staff.
If it makes it through the policy committee. If it doesn't, then it's dead, right?
If it doesn't make it, it can die. It can go to the, if it passes and goes to the floor, it still has a possibility to die.
Right.
The resolutions at the, on the floor is going to determine whether it's going to become
Ultimately, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I'm getting just a quick blush at the information. Hal, if you could read it and kind of, you know, provide your feedback, that would be
Actually, the police chief, too, because
Yeah, I wanted more
Yeah, it really is about the distribution of fines, fees, and assessments, administrative costs for criminal and traffic violations.
Right.
Yeah, well, exactly. And so, you know, just reading some of the examples from the town of Glendora, you know, they have one example where you could, it could cost you more money to try and get the person to pay the fine for the traffic violation than it does
And you get reimbursement.
Yeah, reimbursement. So it's like, the state is getting the lion's share of the
Right.
Of the money.
So it's an effort, it seems to me, it's an effort to get cities a fairer share.
Yes.
As hell I read it. Of course, I look at it and say, the legislature is never going to pass it. But at least we can express, hey, we're not getting our fair share.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know from, I agree, from the police chief and
Okay.
And our attorney, whether I'm reading it right.
Right. Because sometimes, some of these resolutions, they tell you to oppose, but when you're really, really opposing, wrong the position. So that's something that I wanted to make sure.
Thanks. All right. Then item number two, on page 20, the resolution regarding child pornography. All right, then, item number two, on page 20, the resolution regarding child pornography.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay.
The rest of them are good news.
So did I.
And I did two, okay.
They just, those two, three and four.
Right, the two from Needles are really bad news.
The ones from Needles, I don't, the second one from Needles?
Yeah, they both are.
They're both from Needles, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And who always going to this conference?
Self, Ray.
Voting delegate is Cliff.
And Seppi, we have three people.
That's the short answer.
Yeah, Ray, myself, and Seppi.
Right.
Okay.
Five, okay.
Oral communication, no one's there, all right, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Go to.
Second.
Go to the.
All is in favor?
Successor agency.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, roll call, please.
Note, for the record, that all agency members are present.
Okay, new business, consider adoption of the monthly investment report dated June 30th, 2012.
So moved.
Have a second?
Aye.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item B, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a subordination agreement on a first-time homebuyer loan that was made by the redevelopment agency.
So moved.
Have a second?
I have one question.
Okay.
Is this the only first-time homebuyer's loan that was made through the redevelopment agency?
No.
And then why would this be the only one we're voting on?
Because they want to refinance.
So every time someone comes to refinance, we would need to.
Yeah.
Do it separately?
As long as there's a restriction on the actions of the successor agency as there is right now, this is a very routine thing that has happened before, but we, because the successor agency is not legally able to take any actions right now, it's going to have to come to you and then to the Oversight Board.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's this convoluted draconian process that's been set up that forces this.
So we got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Item C, consider adoption of the successor agency minutes of July 23rd, 2012.
I have one slight change there.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew it there would be.
All right, what is it?
Down at the bottom here, under new business, C, to adopt the minutes as proposed, the motion was carried, it reads four to one as if I were voting against it, and that's not the case, it should be four, zero, and then abstaining, or four, zero, one, because I didn't vote against it, I just abstained.
Abstained, okay. All right, we'll make that change, and so you'll make the motion.
So moved.
All right, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Aye. Okay, good. Add it.
I didn't know you were going to go to council meetings, I was always called you, but I went to get in my car, my car would be stuck, I had my conductor, something was broken, and I had no idea you're going or whatever, I couldn't call anybody.
Oh, that's too bad, yeah, no, it was actually a really good meeting, you know, I had applied for the heart board.
No, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah, because nobody else applied.
Nobody else applied?
Right, you were the only one.
I was the only one.
And you got it.
Yeah, you know what, I.